Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The date is April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas. Councilwoman Elliott.
Is it?
Councilwoman McIlhany. Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Amador.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, Mr. McIlhany has been called out of state to, for his employment. We don't know when he may be returning, so he may miss several meetings. I would like to ask for a motion to excuse Mr. McIlhany at this time. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Diaz?
Second.
A motion of second for that, for Mr. McIlhany to be excused. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Also, for the record, Mr. Diaz is not feeling well, and he may have to leave early this evening, and we will make sure that we note it in the record if and when he does have to leave. First item on the agenda is going to be an executive session. I need to ask for a motion to enter into executive session, and the motion maker may use the language off of the agenda. Mr. Bullock?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. Parentheses one, pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice. And parentheses two, pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh T, four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses E, for the purpose of developing strategies for negotiations and instructing the negotiators concerning litigations, Hammer, E.T.A.L., period, versus the City of Commerce City, and the City of Commerce City, versus H.R. Investments, L.L.L.P.E.T.A.L.
And that would be H four Investments, right?
H four, what did I say?
H L.
Oh, H four.
All right, Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion?
A motion of second to go into executive session. For the purposes stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. For the audience, we are going to be a little while in executive session. You'll have a little time, you can run grab you something to eat, or get, get something to drink, whatever it may be, so you don't have to sit around here. But we are planning on getting started promptly at seven, and we may take care of, if we're out of our executive session, we may take care of some minor issues on the agenda between six forty-five and seven. But right now, we're planning on an hour executive session. So feel free to leave and come back if you like, and we'll plan on being, being ready to roll between six forty-five and seven. Thank you. We are in executive session.
We are out of executive session now. I'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you all for being here. We'll get right back into the agenda and I have to ask to amend the agenda to move the Community Reach Center Home Health Grant Presentation to after the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion? Mr. Bullock?
So move.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in the second to amend the agenda to allow the Community Reach Center Home Health Grant Presentation to be after the Pledge of Allegiance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if the staff would pass around the microphones and all the audience to introduce themselves, please.
Sheila Harris.
Esther Hall, Commerce City Historical.
Deborah Bullock, Commerce City Historical Society and Commerce City Cultural Council.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Lisa Nordholt, Parks Rec and Golf.
Thel McColl.
Good evening. Tim Robinson, Stout Street Foundation.
Blake Drury, Stout Street Foundation.
Catalin Wishart, Arapahoe House.
Diane Elio, Catholic Charities.
Heidi McNeely, Cultural Council.
Tina Martinez, Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver.
Jennifer Reed, Mercy Housing.
Lindsay Lierman with Casa of Adams and Bruffeld Counties.
Maxine.
Carmen Sanchez, Terodactyl Baseball.
Marquis Sanchez, Terodactyl Baseball.
Beau Thomas, Terodactyl Baseball.
Listen Brono.
Anita Quintana.
Joe Eisenberg.
Tonya Eisenberg, Brighton and Commerce City Police Department's Victim Services Units.
Anita Mercato, Our Savior Family Center.
Lowell Richardson, Interim Police Chief.
Deale Mingleton Adams, 14 Education Foundation.
Isaiah Mestis with the Youth Advisory Committee.
Angelique Vargas with the Youth Advisory Committee.
Jill Atkinson, Community Reach Center.
Deborah Obermeyer, Community Reach Center.
Ed Sorensen, Community Reach Center.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Rachel Munro, Almost Home.
James Newberry, Public Works.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Michael Scanlon, Adams 14 Education Foundation.
Angela Bornham and Access Housing.
Renee Dees, The Seeker Hub.
Tracy Curtis, Kids First Healthcare.
Norma Portnoy, Kids First Healthcare.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Kathy Eggleston.
Bianca Trujillo.
Dominique Miranda.
Elie Saar Holgin.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We'll start with a presentation as the agenda has been amended to allow for a presentation from Community Reach Center Health Home Grant. I'd like to invite Dr. Jill Atkinson forward to speak on the item.
All right. So thank you very much for amending the agenda to allow us to go first. So I will be brief. So in 2014, Community Reach Center got a CDBG grant to change one of our facilities in Commerce City to accommodate a health clinic. And then in 2014, we partnered with Salud Family Health Services to place a physician in our mental health center with the idea about providing integrated care. So in the meantime, the state of Colorado had applied to the federal government for a SIM grant, which is a state innovation model, and they were awarded a sizable amount and are breaking it out into smaller grants. And so Community Reach was awarded one of four of those grants for our integrated health home at Commerce City. So Colorado's goal behind the SIM is to improve the health of Coloradans by providing access to integrated physical and behavioral healthcare services in coordinated systems with value-based payment structures for 80% of Colorado residents by 2019. So through connecting and integrating our mental health and primary care services, we're providing Commerce City residents with patient-centered care resulting in the triple aim, which is better value, better experience, and improved health. So the problem is that people with mental illness generally die about 25 years earlier than the general population that do not have a mental health illness. And we know that when services are fragmented and disconnected, it leaves people with unmet healthcare needs. And that many people who have a mental health problem also have a comorbid physical health problem. And that it becomes quite costly to treat people in fragmented systems. So the idea is that we integrate care. And when we took a look at the 1,900 consumers that we served in 2015 at Community Reach Center, only 35% reported having a primary care physician. And 15% had diabetes, 13% were obese, 11% had high cholesterol, 10% had hypertension, and 10% had a seizure disorder. So a pretty sizable number of chronic health conditions. So the solution is in integrated care, which is coordinating mental health and primary care services and integrating services so that we treat the whole person. And so one of the other advantages of having an integrated health home is that it reduces stigma and normalizes the consumer experience and reinforces the consumer's confidence in the efficacy of their mental health treatment. So our strategy is to engage our community in understanding what a health home is and the impact to the community that when people have untreated mental health needs or untreated health needs, to engage our consumers in understanding the value added for them by coming to the Community Reach Salud Integrated Health Home. And fundamentally change the way that healthcare providers treat consumers in a comprehensive, integrated manner. So all of our staff are trained to deliver bidirectional integrated care based on person-centered treatment approaches. And so our care team includes a medical provider, a care manager, a psychiatrist, office staff, medical assistant, therapist, dental care professional, and a nurse. And so our goal is to really affect change in how we treat people and to treat the whole person and to get a better patient experience for less cost and better outcomes. And so we are going to have an open house to which you're all invited, May 17th at noon at our Commerce City office, which is just up the street. Thank you.
Does any of the council have questions? No? Thank you very much for coming in this evening. All right. Next is a proclamations and recognitions. We have the Commerce City Police Department Citizen Accommodations. I'd like to invite Intern Police Chief Lowell Richardson forward to present the citizen accommodations. Lowell? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Each year, the police department's commendation board staff recognizes citizens and employees for providing a service to the community or doing something that's extraordinary. And this year, we've recognized five people. I don't believe any of them are here tonight. I didn't hear them in the announcement, but I'll call their names to see if they can come up. Melissa Erin Nez. Andre Jones. Gary Newman. Scott Tompkins. And Herbert Jones. Mr. Newman and Mr. Tompkins, if you could join me up here. Briefly, these gentlemen were driving down 104th Avenue and happened to see a driver of a car that was pulled off to the side of the road that was being choked with a cord by a passenger in the backseat of their car. They heard the gentleman yelling and screaming for help. These two gentlemen and one other stopped, gave aid, and were able to save the life of this man and probably prevent serious injury or possible death. And we wanted to recognize them for their heroic actions on January 22nd of 2015. Right? Mr. Mayor, we have some certificates that we would like to present them if we may do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Tompkins?
On behalf of Commerce City Police Department, thank you for helping out on...
Mr. Newman?
Sir.
Again, thank you very much for helping out that day.
Thank you. Chief? You want to tell us about the others?
Sure. I can speak to, on September 7th of 2015, the police department was investigating a homicide. A body was found down in the 4900 block of Sand Creek. There was no identification, and it was about 4:00 in the morning that two passerby's happened to see a white van parked on the side of the street, blacked out, which seemed unusual. They were driving to work, or I'm sorry, they were driving over to get coffee at a local convenience store. They were on a break. When they drove back, the van was gone. They read on Facebook, of all places, they read on Facebook that we were looking for information. Based on the information that they provided, we were able to identify the suspects and actually clear the case. And that was Melissa Erin Nez and Andre Jones.
Awesome. It's great to have people in our community that keep an eye out and help when someone's in need. So I appreciate you giving those commendations and bringing people to the city council meeting to be recognized for stepping up and doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have the recognition of Commerce City nominees for Adams County Mayor's and Commissioner's Youth Awards. I'd like to invite recreation supervisor Lisa Norholt forward to make the presentation.
So a couple of weeks ago, we were able to recognize three of our kids from the community for the Adams County Mayor's and Commissioners Youth Awards. And I thank the four of you who were able to attend. They were able to come today and be able to be recognized in front of the entire city council. So I'm just going to read a couple of things about the kids. Dominic Miranda was diagnosed with a rare bone cancer when he was twelve. He has overcome numerous surgeries, chemo, partial amputation of his foot, and the many stays in the hospital away from family, friends, and a life as he knew it, along with mental and physical pain from the disease. When Dominic was told that walking and running would be hard, he knew he would not be defeated. He was determined to continue to play football. And in the hospital, two days after the surgery, and leaving Dominic a right foot partial amputee, he gathered the courage to move forward and to get up and go home. He has given speeches about cancer and his journey, helped children gather their courage to move forward, and never give up hope. He continues to help many kids in the cancer world and shares his story with them. After he did not play football, he supported the team on the sidelines. He donated his time to fundraisers and even served as the fundraiser, served at a fundraiser breakfast. His story was featured on Nine News and in the Denver Post, which gave hope, encouragement, and optimism for a future to many children suffering from illness. It also let parents know that there are people who care, there is help out there. At age seventeen, he realizes the future has much more to experience, so he is touring colleges. He creates, he credits Kids First Healthcare Center for catching his tumor for his newfound aspirations to become a nurse. Dominic, do you want to come up?[740.13][740.13](applause). Dominic doesn't want to say anything.[753.13][753.13](laughter). Adam was not able to come today, but I see that Michael, his nominator, is here. Adam was also recognized. He is a senior at Prairie View High School. He has persevered through a variety of issues, including major head trauma, his parents' divorce, and multiple moves. Through all of this, Adam has maintained a very positive attitude and a never-quits spirit. He was nominated by Michael Scanlon, and he has seen Adam mentor his freshman son and be a positive influence on him for many years. He has turned out to be a positive role model for all teens around him. So congratulations to Adam.[794.32][794.32](applause). And finally, Angelique Vargas. Angie lived with her sister and her abusive and neglective stepmother. Although Angie was able to stay strong, her sister was not. Her sister took her own life, and this is when Angie's depression started. Angie then started having anxiety when she believed she could not go on without her sister. Shortly after this, Angie started getting bullied, and it put a hold on her life, including getting bad grades. Because of this, she started attending online school. Angie realized the only way she could change her problem was to remind herself she couldn't give up. She stopped letting bullies get to her and stood up for herself. This allowed her confidence, and she started joining groups at the recreation center. Angie now participates in activities and clubs at the recreation center, such as boxing and the youth advisory committee. She is a leader and is always positive. Her attendance is near perfect, and she is a role model to the group. In addition, Angie was selected to be recognized at the county level on April twenty-eighth. There are over eighty nominees this year in Adams County with just twenty-three advancing to the county level, so a huge accomplishment for Angie. So congratulations to Angie.[868.13][868.13](applause). Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you so much for letting me be here and, you know, letting me advance to the county level means so much to me.
Thank you. Thank you. And, you know, I think it's important to mention, every year we do this Adams County Mayor's Youth Commissioners Award process, and some of the things that youth within our community have overcome. And these two are examples of that. And I would recommend you continue to strive and move forward and create the life that you both deserve. We're proud of the fact that you've been able to overcome special situations within your lives, and we want you to see good, want you to be good, productive citizens of Commerce City. So thank you very much.
Thank you.[919.51][919.51](applause).
Okay, now we're going to move on to the Quality Community Foundation Grant Awards. I'd like to invite Cheryl Carston, who's the director of our finance department, and the foundation president Valerie Medina forward to make their presentation.
Hi, thank you, City Council, for having the Quality Community Foundation with you this evening. I'd like to introduce myself, Valerie Medina, as the president. We have Cheryl Carston's here, who is our support in the Commerce City and secretary chair of our board. And we have Carol Boyt Taylor, who's also a board member. I'm sorry, Terry, you sneak in. Terry, welcome. I'd like to first just thank every, each and every one of you board members for your continued support and the funding to make this possible so that we're able to distribute monies to our local nonprofits that serve our community. With that said, I'd like to invite our nonprofits up, and if you'd like to stay up here so we can take a picture afterwards. I'll go ahead and start. I have, okay, I have Access Housing for a total amount of $4,000. Oh, we don't have to, okay. Adams Fourteen Education Foundation. Adams County Food Bank. Adams County School District fourteen.
How much are those all for, Valerie?
I'm sorry, I was going to say that in... Okay, so we had Access Housing in the amount of $4,000. The Adams Fourteen Education Foundation, $2,500. Adams County Food Bank, $7,500. Adams County School District fourteen, $7,500. Almost Home, $7,500. Arapahoe House, $7,500. Audio Information Network, $1,200. Bridges of Silence, $3,500. Casa of Adams and Broomfield Counties, $7,500. Catholic Charities in the amount of $4,000. Commerce City Cultural Council, $4,000. Commerce City Historical Society, $1,000. Commerce City Youth Athletics, $4,000. Community Reach Center, $3,950. Environmental Learning for Kids, $2,500. Food Bank of the Rockies, $7,000. Junior Achievement, $2,500. Kids First Healthcare, $7,500. Mercy Housing, Holly Park, $4,000. Our Savior Lutheran Church, $650. Ralston House, $5,200. Senior Hub, $7,500. Spotlight Kids Theater, $5,000. St. Anthony North Health Foundation, $5,000. And Stout Street Foundation, $7,500. Altogether, City Council has provided us the funds for $120,000, which was dispersed amongst all of you. I want to thank you all for your support to the community, for everything that you do to serve the community, and for what you bring to us. Thank you.[1220.01][1220.01](applause). At this time, I'd like to invite City Council to come down for a quick photo.
St. Anthony Health.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are you on environmental learning?
Yes.
We'll give those to Cheryl.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, I'm everybody.
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 We'll go ahead and take a short couple of minutes while we stay at the dais and allow
those who are recipients that want to enjoy the rest of their evening to be able to go on. while they're here?
Yes, yes.
All right.
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 All right. All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
every year from the school districts 27J and 14. The deadline this year is the 29th of this month, and they do not have that many applications so far. So if you have some seniors out there that are looking to go to college and looking for a little money, they should be looking at this QCF scholarship, about $4,000 or so. Just a reminder for you, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, they do, they help us out a lot. It used to be that the City Council decided who was going to be the recipients, and now we have that at arms length with a board of directors, and they're doing a fine job. So thanks for bringing that up. Next, we have the Sex Assault Awareness Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Intern Police Chief Lowell Richardson forward to accept the proclamation. And I'd ask our new city attorney to read the proclamation.
City of Commerce City Colorado proclamation, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the City of Commerce City, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact the community as seen by recent statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 71 men in the United States will have experienced sexual assault at some point in their life, and whereas we must collaborate together to educate ourselves, city staff, and the community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in the city encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and whereas the city strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council hereby proclaims the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, encouraging the community to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. In witness where I have here and to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the 18th day of April 2016, City of Commerce City Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation is read for Sex Assault Awareness Month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to say before we come down? I don't think that's on.
No?
Yes.
Okay. Ironically, Kim Acina, the victim advocate coordinator, is attending training in Oregon or Washington, and the training is called You Have Options. It is sexual assault training for advocates and law enforcement investigators, and we've sent investigators from our department out there for this four-day training as well. Here today is Tanya Eisenberg, one of our paid staff victim advocates, to be part of this ceremony tonight in this proclamation. The Commerce City Police Department, in its commitment to its sexual assault victims, has completed a three-year audit of cases that we've investigated in the past to determine the level of service that we've provided our victims of sexual assault. And as a result of that, we found that there are some victims that we may have underserved, and we're going to work with them in any manner that they choose to move forward with their cases. This is our commitment to the sexual assault awareness, not only the month, but victims of sexual assault throughout the year.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we want to make sure everybody in this community served and served in an equitable manner, so thank you very much. If the council will join me down front to take a picture with the proclamation and hand it off. You know what's funny? What's funny, Renee? Gotcha. Well, we're in the middle of a meeting, so let's hold off on some of that stuff. All right, next item on the agenda, Citizen Communication. I'd like to invite a couple of folks up to the podium. Remember that you have three minutes to address the council. State your name and address for the record. Ms. Thelma Cole, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm Thelma Cole, 5841 East 67th Place. I'm here on behalf of the seniors at the Rec Center to invite you to buy a ticket for our pancake breakfast for May the 7th at the Rec Center from 7:00 to 10:00. It's $4. That includes pancakes, sausage, coffee, and orange juice. And also, they'll have, for kids, the blow-up little jumpy things in the Rec Center, or adults can do it too if they want. But I have 23 tickets. I want to see the council to come up and take the tickets and give me $92, please. I thirded.
I'm really glad that you're up here doing that, because we have a lot of folks in the audience tonight. I know Mr. Scanlon is a new Water Board member, and would love to take a dozen of those off your hands.
Well, I feel that with all the money we save the city for our volunteer hours, which is thousands and thousands of dollars, I think you guys can afford to give me $92.
Come on up, Thelma, and start collecting. Here's my 20. Doesn't matter, give her 20 bucks, Renee. Just give her 20 bucks, Renee. Come on, Renee, you're embarrassing me. Michael's got his 20 bucks out ready. Come on, Renee. I'll give you 20 if you need to borrow 20. Look, your wife has 20. Here you go, Thelma, take my 20. I just want two tickets, give the rest to the seniors. It's good. Thank you. There's a 20. Everybody's got their 20s out. You want to borrow 20, Crystal?
Renee doesn't have money.
Come on, JD, 20. I got it. I'm trying to raise your money, Thelma.
I'll bring.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
How much is it for kids?
It's 20. How many you got left, Thelma? Thelma, how many you got left?
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 left.
10 left? That's 40, that's 40 bucks, right? Thelma? Thelma, that's 40 bucks, right? Oh, come on, everybody's heard that excuse. City Attorney, no cash? Rick, split the other 10 with me.
Yeah, I will.
Here. Come on. Yes, we have, we have had these before, yes. Yes, we have.
Give that to Sean.
Don't let Paulo touch it.
Mr. Mayor, will you offer for two more tickets for me so that I can give, I can take the whole family?
How many do you need? I want to buy more.
I got mine through the beauty shop, through Clara McKee.
Thank you, guys, and enjoy. It is good. Pancakes will be good.
Thank you, Thelma. All right, we got Renee for 20. Take note, because that'll probably never happen again. All right. Unless it's a silent auction. Yes, it is. All right, next, I'd like to call forward Tina Martinez, and hopefully you don't have tickets, because I just gave all my cash away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council first. I would love to hire Ms. Thelma to come fundraise for Boys and Girls Club. That was incredible. And I wanted to just come and thank the City Council for your ongoing support, the City of Commerce City, of the Boys and Girls Club, and give you an update. As you all know, we opened the new club at 61st and Holly in August, and within just six months, we have filled that building. We are currently at capacity. We've doubled the number of kids we were serving in our old space at Kearney Middle School into the new space, and we have a waiting list of 200 families, nearly 250 children. And so we know that there's demand for our services, and we're excited to be able to provide for more than 160, 170 kids most recently, so that you have a document in front of you. We've continued to update that. Most exciting for us is we've really held true to wanting to serve more teens in this new space, and we continue to see that number growing. So today, we're seeing 50 to 60 teens every day coming into the club. We close the club at 8:00 and keep it open for that last hour just for teens. We're doing some incredible things with them. We have been working just before this last test in April with our juniors on ACT prep. We've been doing college preparation. They're in the community doing service projects, and we've taken them on many college tours, just to give you a few examples. And in fact, it was just last Monday, we took kids to CSU for a full-day tour, and we have a new partnership with them, so that any young person who comes to the club and participates in our college prep program, when they graduate, they are eligible for a CSU scholarship of $2,500 a year. So that's something we're excited to build on in the future. Some other things that I just wanted to highlight, we've really built up our health programs, and as we move into the summer, we're doing everything from getting our garden ready to family cooking classes, where our kids and our parents are working side-by-side to learn about healthy cooking and taking groceries home to make those meals at home for the family. Yoga classes, we're partnering with the Colorado Ballet to do dance classes this summer. We also have an 80-acre residential camp, so youth will be able to go up to the camp for just $10 and get a full-week camp experience, everything you would imagine, canoeing, hiking, singing, bonfires, all of the fun things that go with camp. We are working with the City of Commerce City Rec Center and many partners in a collaboration around the Get Outdoors Colorado, hosting a youth advisory council at the club, and really helping youth connect with some of the great resources like the arsenal here in Commerce City, and get kids connected to nature right in their communities. We just completed our basketball season and starting soccer and volleyball, and we're seeing hundreds of kids participate in those sports. We're doing career exploration, and we have two teens that have been offered internships, one in journalism with Aurora Sentinel, and another right here in Commerce City at, I hope I say this correctly, Honen Equipment?
Honen.
Honen Equipment. So we're really giving our teens more opportunities to connect in the community. Last, I wanted to update you on our youth development park. So we have been working on this to build an additional space for outdoor play for our young people. It would be a turf-filled, thank you again to the Commerce City for the donation of additional space. It's a $1.2 million project. To date, we have about $750,000 confirmed. That's groups like Adams County, Daniels Fund, as Colorado Garden Association, and then we have a couple private foundations that we're working with, as well as an ask-in to MLB, Major League Baseball. And then finally, we're doing a corporate lunch in the summer to make up the difference. So we are hoping to start on development in the spring and have that project completed pretty quickly. So those are just a few highlights. Again, thank you to the individuals who've come out to some of our special events and recognized our kids with us. It means a lot to have the support from you all in the Boys and Girls Club and for all of our youth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For everything you're doing in our community.
Thank you.
And Thelma, if you're looking for a job, they need help raising a million dollars.
We're gonna have her shake people down, I like it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that will complete our, well, before I do that, let me ask, is there anyone else in the audience who didn't get a chance to sign up for Citizen Communication that absolutely would like to speak to the council this evening? Saying none, thank you. That concludes our Citizen Communication portion of the meeting this evening. We're moving into approval of the minutes. We have February 1st, 2016. I'm open for a motion to allow councilmembers Diaz and Carson to abstain from voting on the minutes because of their excused absence. Let's see, Mr. Bullock? Okay. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for the abstention of Paulo Diaz and JD Carson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for approval of the minutes of February 1st, 2016. Councilman Douglas?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 1st, 2016 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we're gonna take care of the March 7th, 2016 minutes. I'm open for a motion to allow Mayor Pro Tem Bullock and councilmembers Douglas to abstain from voting on the minutes of March 7th because of their excused absence. Councilwoman Carson?
So moved.
Councilmember Diaz?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. I'm open for a motion now to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2016. Councilwoman Elliott?
Move to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2016.
Councilman Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes of March 17th, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we have the March 14th, 2016 minutes. I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th. Mr. Teeter?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2016.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. Now we have the March 21st, 2016 minutes. I'm open for a motion to allow councilmembers Teeter and Diaz to abstain from voting on the minutes of March 21st because of their excused absence. I'm open for that motion for abstention. Mr. Bullock?
Move for a motion of abstention.
And let's see, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the March 21st, 2016 minutes. Councilwoman Carson?
Minutes of March 21st, 2016.
Thank you. Councilman Diaz? Oh, that's right, how about we go with Mr. Teeter? He can't either, how about Mr. Amador? I'm just looking down the line here. Mr. Amador, second said. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Saying none? I'm gonna turn over to the city attorney and ask him to read the items on the consent agenda.
Resolution 2016-2, resolution authorizing award of contract for Tower Road widening project, project number PW-03-2014. Resolution 2016-3- Resolution 2016-30, resolution approving award of contract to Atkins North America, Inc. for construction management and inspection services for the Highway 2 widening project. Resolution 2016-52, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2016-53, resolution authorizing negotiations, purchase, and the exercise of the city's powers of eminent domain to acquire certain real property interest necessary for the relocation of the Bell Creek intersection at 104th Avenue.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Will the city clerk please do the roll call vote?
Okay.
Mr. McAlton, he's not here. At, for the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously, eight to zero with one excused absence, Mr. McAlton. There are no pulled consent agenda items this evening, so we'll move right into resolutions. We'll start with Resolution 2016-42. I'd like to invite Deborah Bullock forward and Ms. Miller to make their presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Deborah Bullock and I'm here on behalf of the Commerce City Cultural Council. And we are presenting our public art program, a project that we've been working on with the pool at the Paradise Island Pool in Pioneer Park. So the mission of the public art program is to develop and administer a strong public art program as an opportunity to support the city in creating a quality community for a lifetime. As you know, the city council adopted its first public art master plan in 2013. This master plan provides a framework to guide the cultural council in selecting the most appropriate artwork that reflects the community's values and culture for designated locations throughout Commerce City. In January of 2015, the council adopted a resolution offering the city's 1% funding commitment and distribution of funding between selection, operating, and maintenance for the program, which includes a consultant, as you're aware of, and that's Deana Miller. She's with me tonight. And with the approval of 2K in 2013, the public art is now a component of these projects. So we're happy about that. And so we're doing Pioneer Park because that was the first project. And that's why we're here. And Deana's gonna give you the oversight of what we've been doing at Pioneer Park.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Deana Miller. I'm with Art Management and Planning Associates and I'm the city's public art consultant and so thrilled to be helping you with your ballot issued 2K projects. This evening, we're presenting to you a proposal for a public art project to be located in Pioneer Park. You can see here on this slide that we have started and completed the art selection process, which included seven members of the community. That art selection committee set the criteria for the art selection. They also reviewed 31 artist's applications and they selected three semifinalists to develop proposals for the project, of which they selected one finalist who we're presenting to you tonight. On March 8th, the cultural council reviewed the proposal and approved it to be forwarded to you for review. And my participation is just facilitating the process and helping the community come to a consensus about what project they would like to propose to you and recommend for the project. So a little bit about the details here. The project is funded by the ballot issued 2K and the construction at Paradise Island Pool. 1% of that construction was $81,400. And you can see listed here the project expenses. What you're reviewing this evening is the artist's contract for $74,500. And that project budget for the artist will include costs such as fabrication, construction, insurance, engineering, and all of the costs that go into building and installing the sculpture. And one great thing about this is that this circulates monies through our economy, which is a really great economic development tool. The artist is, has proposed to us a very fun and playful installation, which we will show you a nice model of over here to your right in a moment. The committee wanted something that was kinetic. And so artist Michael Clapper, who lives and works in Denver, has proposed a very fun and kinetic installation that's inspired by the joy of flying kites. And if you wouldn't mind, we'll display the model. Shall we walk it up towards you? Would you like to see it up close? Okay.
Set it in front or in the back?
The sculpture installation is titled "In the Wind", and it will sway in the wind at varying degrees from 10 miles an hour to up to 90 miles an hour, which it will be engineered for. It will sway at varying distances from its posts. The artworks here will be installed between Kearney and Rose Street. And you do have a site plan in your packet if you would like to see exactly how that installation will be positioned. It will be positioned to the south side of the sidewalk that meanders through the north side of the park. And it will be near the baseball and skate park, as well as in between the two pedestrian crosses that are brand new right there. So kind of welcoming people to walk into the park at those two entry points. It will stretch about 200 feet along that 60th Avenue stretch. The materials will be low maintenance and easily maintained and will withstand the elements of Colorado. We have a small budget to maintain the artworks as part of the 1% ordinance that you passed last January, a year ago. Let's see. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, anything else? I think I just went through all my notes so quickly, I was surprised. So with that, we would love to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions to the council? Mr. Bullock.
Okay, in the first picture, which showed kinetic, fun, and playful, it showed kites of all different color. In the diagram and on the screen, it just shows them in yellow. Are they all gonna be just yellow or are they gonna be kites of all different colors?
They will all be just yellow. The artist was inspired by an installation by Jean-Claude Incristo, which I included in your packet, the umbrellas in California. It makes a really huge impact when the installation is all one color. He selected the yellow color because of the connection to the sky and how beautiful yellow looks against not only gray clouds but blue sky. And so his proposal is to have all one color.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Did you keep this?
No.
It's gonna go in the museum.
Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution before we move forward? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Douglas.
Open to support resolution to the support of public art installation at Paradise Island Pool, Pioneer Park.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Resolution 2016-42, will the city attorney read the title, please?
Resolution 2016-42, resolution in support of public art installation for Paradise Island Pool at Pioneer Park.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And thank you to the cultural council for taking the time and diligence to make sure we have nice things to look at in Commerce City. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 2016-19. I'd like to invite the, bless you, Community Development Director Kramer forward to make his presentation. He's here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
We are here tonight to discuss the Mile High Greyhound Park Master Developer Agreement. We're gonna talk about what's happened since we've had a lengthy discussion, talk about the current status, including the possibility for council to vote to adopt or approve the master developer agreement this evening possibly, and then potential next steps. So to jump right in, on February 1st, the master developer agreement, in its form then, was presented to city council for consideration for adoption. There was an overview of the major deal points. It was really the culmination of a series of discussions about those deal points. There's discussion about a new proposal, however, regarding the school district shareback of the tax increment financing. And that was something that council had not heard prior to that. Additionally, that evening, we also heard from a new potential residential developer, Dell West. And so because of some of those outstanding issues, primarily the school district issue, council voted to continue the case until March 14th, until further input could be gained. In that time, staff did have a chance to discuss with the school district the proposal, and I'll get into that in more detail in just a minute. But then after the, at the March 14th hearing, the case was continued again with thoughts that the potential master developer, Regen LLC, and the residential developer who came on February 1st, Dell West, might be able to further their negotiations for a letter of intent. I will circle back to that in just a moment as we talk about where the master developer agreement is today. So just to clarify, we touched on this briefly on March 14th regarding what happened with our conversations with the school district tonight because there is a possibility that council could consider an approval or a vote for the master developer agreement. We are gonna get into this in just a little bit more detail so that the council has a full understanding of what the conversations were. In our meeting and subsequent correspondence with the school district, they understood that the project would probably or most definitely add students, pupils to their systems, especially Central Elementary. They, however, recognized that they really have some short-term needs and that the long-term benefits of the TIF would not be as beneficial as potentially the short-term needs. So they were supportive of the project keeping the TIF for both the commercial and residential. However, they had a few aspects that they wanted everyone to consider. They would like to keep the fee in lieu of land dedication that would be standard for a residential project like this. And that was assumed all along. The developers would provide a voluntary contribution to support a modular type of classroom space at Central Elementary immediately. And that would include an ERU that the city would provide so that there could possibly be bathroom facilities in that modular. And this wouldn't be any old modular that you would just go by. This is one that they have picked out that meets their needs from a classroom perspective. Additionally, they asked that should the district pass an additional levy for a bond or a mill levy override, that the new mill amounts would go back to the school district. Those wouldn't be captured as part of the TIF. So, and I have, the next slide is the entire language that we amended the master developer agreement with. I included this, not so I could go over it with you word by word, but just so you could glance at it. I know you often look at the packets, the presentation packet language ahead of time. So this is just an opportunity to call this language out specifically for you. After discussions with Regen LLC, the idea would be that this was an acceptable solution. And as a result, the MDA language reflects the proposal by the school district. So I've gone over this a little bit, but more specifically, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. There have been the joint conversations between the city, Regen, and Dell West. And as I mentioned earlier, some of those conversations were really aimed at trying to get Dell West and Regen to a letter of intent. What we've learned since the March 14th meeting is that it's because of state law regarding land owned by urban renewal authorities, it's a little bit more complicated than originally thought. And so the reason for that is that state law requires that any land owned by an urban renewal authority has to be disposed of through a competitive process. So there has to be some sort of listing or notification or RFP or something that qualifies as a competitive process. The reason that matters here is because it affects the ability for Regen and Dell West or any other sub-developer to sign an LOI before that competitive process is completed. And so what that means in practical terms is that really for this process, for the Mile High Greyhound Park project to begin development, the sequence of steps probably does need to happen in the order you see here to be consistent with state law. So the master developer agreement would be the first step because it authorizes Regen through the agreement to negotiate on behalf of the urban renewal authority. Then the competitive process that I mentioned earlier would have, can then be undertaken. And at that point, there is certainly opportunities, once the competitive process is done, for some informal agreements to, for Regen and others, be it Dell West or anybody else, to finalize negotiations. However, before the actual transfer of property could occur, the URA plan has to be approved by you, the board. And before you can approve the urban renewal plan, we have to take all those additional steps we talked about last time as required by House Bill 1348, adding three new board members, going through mediation if there's a disagreement with those potential new board members about what the formation of that looks like. So all of that will take a little bit extra time. But once that board is seated, then there's the opportunity to approve the URA plan. At that point, then the URA has the ability to dispose of the land per state law. So what that means practically for us is the MDA approval really kicks things off. And that allows the negotiation process and the competitive bidding process more specifically to begin quickly. And so I'm gonna circle back to that in just a moment about some things, ways that that might start happening sooner rather than later. So tonight, we do have a couple of options. One is to approve the MDA as included in your packet. And it does have four changes from the February 1st version that was in your packet. If you will allow me, I would like to go over each one of those four, one at a time. They do have bearing, I think, on the proceedings. The first is the definition of the incremental property taxes related to the school district. That's the language that I showed you a few minutes ago, this language on this slide. That is what is going to allow the school district to receive the modular building sooner rather than later and then for the project to keep the TIF for school district fees. The second change, one thing that has come up while the project is unable and while Regen is unable to select a sub-developer at this time prior to a competitive process. There were some discussions that allowed all parties involved to realize that there are some other potential funding tools that might be available that might help this project. Specifically, low-income housing tax credits, as an example. Reviewing the document through that lens, there were three definitions that needed to be tweaked to allow for a little bit more flexibility on what's included within the tax increment district. Because a low-income housing tax credit project would not be included in that tax district by virtue of its funding mechanism. So the MDA was basically, some of the definitions were changed to allow for a little bit more flexibility moving forward for other financing tools such as low-income housing tax credits. So that's the second change. The third change, the master developer agreement has a series of exhibits. One of those exhibits, one of the more critical exhibits, is Exhibit C. It's the development plan. It calls out the financing and the schedule for the project. There, and with a deal of this nature, sometimes it gets complicated. There is an Exhibit B to Exhibit C. Exhibit B is the schedule. The reason the schedule matters in this case is because there is a provision in the master developer agreement that says that if a party defaults on the schedule, there's an opportunity, if there's an event of default, there's an opportunity to end the agreement. Well, since you've seen this agreement last, there's been a section added to Exhibit B to Exhibit C. And it is a new line. It calls for the solicitation of a vertical development partner. It calls for the solicitation of a vertical development partner, and it has a start date of 4/19 and an end date of June 17 of this year. The idea is that we are attempting to encourage, to force, to get the process for selecting potential vertical development sooner rather than later, not waiting until urban renewal plan is in place necessarily. So that's now in the master developer agreement, Exhibit B schedule, Exhibit B to Exhibit C schedule. So that's new from last time, and it's another tool to try and encourage development sooner rather than later. The fourth change since the last master developer agreement is Section 13.5, and it is sort of in line with this, and it clarifies if, in the event that an urban renewal plan is not approved, that both parties, either party has the ability to terminate the MDA. So you, as the board, have more flexibility should that urban renewal plan not happen, come up to disagreements about what's included, et cetera. You will have the opportunity to go in a different direction as a result of that. So those four changes are what's in the MDA in your packet. Staff is recommending that you consider approving that MDA. We've gone over each one of these four pretty carefully, but the rest of the master developer agreement, all those deal points are what you've already heard from before. So another alternative, though, before the sequencing slide that I showed you, before that was really solidified, as some of those discussions with Regen and potential other sub-developers were occurring, the low-income housing tax credit proposal was receiving some serious consideration as an affordable housing project might be a real benefit for the project. However, the master developer agreement, as written, probably won't be able to accommodate the financing. The financing part of it will have to be restructured. And so another option for you to consider tonight is if you'd rather see that low-income housing tax credit type of financing structure for a future sub-developer, whoever that may be, you could direct staff for us to work with Regen on language like that. However, again, as I mentioned, staff is recommending that you consider approval of the MDA this evening. So that is my presentation. Rick Wells with Regen LLC is here tonight, and he has a few words, I think, for council to consider as well.
Hi, I'm Rick Wells with Regen LLC. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council people for the opportunity to be here tonight. Want to thank the staff for all the work they've put in over the last couple of months since we talked last, and it has been a busy couple of months. We've made a lot of progress, I think, on a lot of different fronts in moving this agreement and moving this project forward. Not the least of which, and I think very important, both to my economics in pursuing this project and to yours and the success of the project, was to resolve the issue about the school and the proportion of TIF that was held back on residential projects. This project needs to have a healthy component of residential development, multifamily, for-sale, mixed income, for rent, just a true mixed-use, mixed-income residential project. And unfortunately, handicapping it by giving the amount that we had originally proposed to the schools did not make it financially feasible. I can assure you that in looking at that change alone, that change makes it possible for this deal to go forward, in my view, now. It's ready to go now with that change. And that's, that's really the emphasis of what I want to say, is I'm ready to go. I'm ready to move forward. We've got the MDA in a condition where it's executable, and it can be a good template to move forward with. I'll guarantee you, it will change at some point in time. We will have to come back and amend it, and that's just the nature of these deals. They do change over time as the market changes and as conditions change. But it's a good place to start, and I'm ready to move forward. The next part of the process, as Chris indicated, is as we've come to learn with changes in the rules and the way the urban renewal districts are structured, we do need to go back out for a solicitation for a vertical developer. I would plan on doing that process very quickly, next two weeks, or two months, excuse me, have that process complete. I was thinking, I would like to have a solicitation out within the next two weeks, so that we can get something back and then have time to process it. But that's a critical part of the process that needs to start. We cannot start that process unless we get the MDA approved, and you can't start that process with any money until you get the MDA approved. After that, it's just an ongoing stream of rezoning, engineering, planning, putting the urban renewal plan together. We estimate it's probably a six to nine-month process, and nine months is pretty typical about how one, how long one of these processes take to get through rezoning, but we'll try and move that as quickly as possible. During that timeframe, my money will be going out, investing in the project to move it forward. That's all my money that goes forward, and I can assure you, I'm not Stan Kronke. I don't have billions of dollars laying around where I could put money into a project and then let it sit empty. When I put money into the project, the only way I get my money back out of that project is when you have your first closing. Why do I say when you have your first closing? Because that's when I have my first closing. I don't get a dime out of this thing back until you sell land, and that's critical. I put money out, nothing comes back until you sell land, because we're partners in this. We move forward, when you sell land, I get to, the project starts to make money, I can then reinvest that money into infrastructure, and we're off and we're running. That's how it's structured. The good news is, it's got lots of schedule in there. It has timelines, we have deliverables, we have a schedule. If I'm not meeting the schedule, you have the ability to terminate the agreement. That's part of the partnership, right? And so I'm ready to move forward. We've got a schedule, we've got an agreement that works. The good news is, we've also had some productive discussions with a potential developer. We do have to go through this solicitation process, but I would say I'm encouraged by the discussions we've had with Dell West. I would expect that when we do the solicitation, there'll be a strong part of that process. They will submit, and I hope be very competitive in that process. They've got some great ideas about what sort of product they want to build out there. They're interested in building workforce housing, affordable housing, using tax credits. That's presented some challenges in terms of how that fits with the overall pro forma of the project, and we're working through those challenges. But I want to emphasize that it is a working relationship now. Craig Fichette from Dell West is here tonight, and will likely speak during the public part of the process, but I think he'll tell you the same things. We've talked frequently, we've been exchanging, I think we're on version five of an LOI now, and we'll certainly get to version six before, or seven before we're done, but it has been going back and forth. We've been meeting, we've been working through issues, and I feel confident that whether it's Dell West or somebody else, that we have the ability to attract a strong residential development partner. So I'm ready to move forward. Would urge you to go ahead and approve the MDA as this has been presented to you, and look for your support and partnership.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff or Rick from the council at this time? Mr. Bullock? No? Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the MDA Exhibit C4, there is a potential land use map on there. In that potential land use map, we just heard that we're not Stan Kronke in that, you know, we don't make a dime until we start to sell some of this land, and so in reading Exhibit C4, the verbiage in here that actually caught my attention that says, "For this reason, a significant portion of the property has been set aside," parentheses, "land banked, that could accommodate a range of multiple related or affiliated users." So when I'm looking at this, this Exhibit C4, what is the quadrant that you're talking about? And so the quadrant refers to the northwest quadrant? And so I'm having a disconnect.
Yes, northwest quadrant. And what we're talking about in that regard is that the city, and I would like to pursue a, an institutional, educational campus-type user for that quadrant of the project. And the reality is, that's not a project, that's not a project that's likely to lead in this development of the overall 60-acre project. If we can get, if Adam Schools comes tomorrow and says, hey, I'm ready to build something and it makes sense to us, great, we'll build it as soon as they're ready to build. I don't think that's likely. I think it's more likely that the residential and some of the commercial uses happen earlier, but the idea is that we not develop that quadrant as commercial or residential, but until we agree that it shouldn't be held, that it should be held then for some sort of an educational training-type use, institutional use.
So just for the general public, and for everyone to see the map, I'd like an explanation of the map that we're agreeing to? And it does have some colors here.
Right.
I understand what the colors mean, but I'm just, I need everyone to understand where we're going and how big. So are you just simply talking about the gray box of 6.5 acres? I'm trying to figure this out in my mind.
Yes, that's about right. And the next thing I'd like to point out is, it's an excellent question, and I can assure you that one of the first things that will change over the course of our relationship in developing this project is things like that map. I can sit here today and say, based on what I know of what could come out of a relationship with Dell West, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make some changes to that map. And the reason we have that map as a part of what we're referring to as our operating agreement, as the relationship, how we work through the development of this project together, is so that it can be amended from time to time. We have a schedule that says we'll do it at least annually, so that as potential uses change, as the market changes, we would look at the map, look at the uses, look at the densities, make changes as appropriate. But that one specific quadrant, the gray quadrant in upper northwest corner is what we're talking about in terms of holding it for institutional use.
So when I look at the map, if we could, if staff could explain the colors of what that means, and just kind of, you know, maybe in that southeast corner, the green box of 3.28, just kind of explain what that is, because I'm, where I'm going is, I'm trying to figure out where are we starting at, and when are some of our milestones so that we can get some of this development done?
Understood. Good question. So just a quick tour of what the concept is in the master developer agreement. There is some language in here that does give some caveats to this, because as you know, we have yet to go through the zoning process, so this is subject to change, as Rick mentioned. The light yellow, that is really contemplated to be the residential, and this is the little darker shade, but this would be the sort of the medium-density residential. The lighter shade that you see here is contemplated to be a little less dense than that, possibly a duplex kind of project. You know, where these exactly land on the project, that will be determined really through the infrastructure and then the zoning process, but the light blue, the 3.2 acres, is the Boys and Girls Club. The green area is the regional drainage that serves, frankly, a huge portion of the city, not really this project. It's, the project is sort of shouldering the burden of regional drainage for most of the, not most, but a lot of the core cities south of 64th. This area over here is contemplated to maybe be potentially a vertically-integrated mixed-use building, so maybe ground floor retail with some residential above. The southwest corner is contemplated for potential retail users, pad sites, sit-down restaurants, et cetera. And then finally, the 6.5 acres is the area that was contemplated for the educational piece. These land uses are consistent with the vision plan that was done in concert by you, in concert with the market feasibility analysis. And as it relates to the timing and the language in there, Councilman Amador, I can say, one of the things that we have talked about with Regen, and frankly, with other potential sub-developers that might come along, like Dell West, is that moving the solicitation process up, as we have done in the master developer agreement, and as Mr. Wells has indicated that he would be doing sooner rather than later, that does have the added benefit of looking at potentially this area as what would possibly be handled first through that solicitation process. Unfortunately, see, I've got this pointer, and you can see that, and then when I move it down here, it turns into a crosshairs, and it's hard to see. So can you guys see where that is going?
Yeah.
I'm pointing to it with my finger, and that doesn't seem to work, so. But this, this would be contemplated to possibly be a first phase that could be accomplished through a solicitation project right away. If that happens, the good news is that possibly might move up both of the educational and the retail portions, because the selection process and the negotiations are much further along for the residential piece. So the opportunities for us with Regen to begin conversations with potential educational partners should move up.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm just trying to be transparent in what we are doing here as a council. This does sit in my ward, and it has been vacant for some time, and I know that these things take time, and ultimately, they do get amended over time based on a variety of factors. And so I guess my next question is, on the pro forma that we're looking at, for transparency again, explain to people how you've come to the pro forma and where we end on some milestone dates, if that's fair.
I'm sorry, how, how I came to the pro forma in terms of how it's put together?
Well, it's market-driven, right? And so I'm just trying to
Sure.
...understand some of the milestones that
Sure.
...we're projecting to be out there in the pro forma.
Sure. Okay, you bet. And in my mind, I kind of break it down into discreet phases. The first phase is what I would call pre-construction, which is for the next nine, nine months to 12 months. I think we can get it done in nine, but 12 is what's actually in the schedule, what's actually in the MDA. It says we will get through the zoning, the urban renewal plan approval process, and the engineering, you have to do engineering, sewer drainage studies, all the sorts of things that you have to do in order to get a site ready for construction, for vertical construction, right? Or horizontal construction. So that happens, the deadline in the schedule is 3/31/2017. At that point in time, my intent is to have a, having gone through a solicitation, a letter of intent, and a contracting process with a vertical developer, and my, my intent is to have my first closing as soon as I get the zoning done, which hopefully is around that same, let's call it first quarter 2017, just to be a little more generic, okay? So it's first quarter 2017. That closing then gives me proceeds from the closing. I can then turn those proceeds around and invest them into horizontal infrastructure. So if I've got a developer ready to develop, let's say, 175-unit affordable multifamily deal on 62nd and Parkway Drive, and start the first phase of development of 24 up to 72 for-sale duplex units in that same area, I would build Parkway Drive, and I would build parts of 63rd and the infrastructure needed to get that first phase to go vertical. Typically, I assume that the vertical development phase is 18 months, depends on the product. You can do it a little bit faster, sometimes you can do it a little bit slower. And I've broken the project down into four phases, so it stretches out, you know, it stretches out over five or six years, and that's, that's pretty typical. That's a fairly aggressive timeframe for a project of this size. And I overlap the retail and institutional, the training development on the third and fourth phases of the residential development. So it's happening at the same time as the third and fourth phases of the residential. And so what I'm really anticipating is that the east side of Parkway Drive gets developed earlier as residential, and then moves over to the west side of Parkway Drive, and that those phases of residential and mixed use get developed at the same time as the commercial and institutional training use gets developed. And the way I make money is after I invest in the, in the horizontal infrastructure, and after these uses start to get built, they start to generate property tax. And if it's a retail use, it starts to generate sales tax. And I, under the MDA, I have the ability to recapture that income to pay me back for the infrastructure I've invested in. So that's the way I've done a lot of different projects around town. We've talked about on City Park South, Gates, the Mercy Hospital, or excuse me, the children's hospital, is I buy land, I put hospital is I buy land, I put infrastructure in, I do the entitlements, and then I get repaid by selling those parcels to vertical developers such as Dell West or others. And then I get repaid from the TIF that comes out of that vertical development. And so that's generally how the, how the pro forma gets structured. And then I back in, I, I end up with a return on my investment based upon the, the investment in the infrastructure. And what's key for me is I'm not Stan Kronke, it's not all my money. I need investors and I've got investors for every project I've ever done and I've already talked to investors about this project, but they require a return that's reasonable for the risk of their investment. And so I target a return and it's in, it's in the plan that we've got going forward that I think is sufficient for me to be able to attract capital and make a return on the project. So that's kind of how the project, the pro forma gets put together. And as a part of that, we kind of described the, the schedule, but there is a, the, the schedule is in more detail as to the, the development phases as I've projected them at this point for the, for the vertical development of the project. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you, Rick. That was probably still a little more in depth than I was anticipating, but it works. And we have it.
And you got it on record.
We got it on record. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Now, Chris, you said there's some timelines for the vertical. What are those timelines again?
In exhibit B to exhibit C, so it's at the end of those, the pages that we were just talking about that start with the letter C, there is a milestone schedule, looks like this. The one that was specifically added that talks about the vertical constructor, vertical developer that we've been discussing here today is at the bottom, under financing, development, partnering, the last section. It is the first line, says solicitation for vertical development partners. Begin date tomorrow. It doesn't say tomorrow, it says four and eighteen, but that's tomorrow. So that's the part that has been added for the timelines that was not in the last version that you saw.
Okay. Now, on these approvals as things go forward, being the URA, URA board, and we have to get all the players together going forward, correct? In order to approve, in order to prove what's gonna happen on the plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So how can we do this now if we don't have everybody in the group together to approve?
And if we're talking about, yeah, if we're talking about the urban renewal plans specifically, we, we can't do that today.
Right.
So what has, but we can't do that today no matter what, whether, whether you approve it tonight or not. So if, if, if the MDA is approved tonight, we have five concurrent programs that need to start tomorrow. And working with, I think we mentioned this before, Brownstein, Hyatt, Farber and Shrek are sort of the leading, one of the leading experts in the state about thirteen forty-eight and urban renewal in general, and they would help us begin navigating the, all the additional steps required by House Bill thirteen forty-eight to get the additional board members so that you all are eligible to approve an urban renewal plan. So thirteen forty-eight efforts are one step. Beginning the urban renewal plan process is another step. The zoning work, which would include neighborhood meetings, is a third step. The neighborhood meetings are actually the fourth step. And then we would need to go through a process of evaluating the MDA on an ongoing basis as a, as sort of a fifth step. So if it's approved tonight, we should be starting five concurrent processes to make this happen as soon as it's sort of legally possible and market possible. And so we would really begin starting the process of reconstituting the board as contemplated by thirteen forty-eight immediately. But we have to wait until the MDA sign for that in any case.
Right, okay. Yeah, you know, I have some concerns over here in the gray area as far as bringing in some sort of educational piece to that, that making sure that we're agreeable in what you put in, not that you get to choose what goes in there and we have to make sure there's agreement because I don't want to have something come in that we're not comfortable with because we're have the answer to the, to the citizens and, and then the, also the council, the future council as well.
Right.
And just to make sure that the community is involved going forward because, you know, this project has, we've had some, some stalls here and, and some timelines that we thought were, were gonna come up and didn't happen. And here at this point here, we actually gave this, gave this more, more time than, than we thought we were going to back in February at this point right now, so. And I don't want to hold any, hold any, any more than I have already. So I'd like to see this go forward, but also mindful that, that things do get done based on the timeline. I really would appreciate that.
I appreciate your, your thoughts and your sentiments and I agree. It's, it's unfortunate this project got caught up in the change in the state laws impacting urban renewal authorities, but I'm confident that we'll work through that. It's, we, we would have gotten caught up in that anyway, it just happened to happen when it happened and, and we'll deal with it. I mean, the good news is it really is a partnership. As to your, as to your point about the educational and institutional use, I, I don't, I will, I will be actively leading that process, but will not be successful in that process unless the city and the school districts and the county are active and the community are active participants in that.
Yeah.
My, I can tell you what my pro forma carries for that parcel in terms of value, nothing. I assume essentially it's, it's, it's a community use. I don't get any TIF off of it. I don't, I, you know, if, if there's any sale of land value in there, it's just, it's de minimis. And so truthfully, it really is, I think it's zero. In fact, I'm, I'm certain it's zero. And, and that's because I assume it is just a part of the overall community development and it's not an economic contribution to the project. So my incentive is to get something built there that truly is positive for not just the, the surrounding communities, but also this community, right? It's gonna be a big neighbor for whatever does get built there. We want to make sure it's a good neighbor and we want to make sure it contributes to the community. So it will be, that's something I need help on from the city to make that successful.
And then just in the future, when we have these maps up with little color charts, if we could have some names indicate exactly what, what those are.
They are down there. You're right though, that, that's an excellent point. In, in past presentations, I've had about forty slides as a hip pocket and I didn't carry those over to this one. So point well made, Councilman Douglas.
No, I appreciate that.
I completely agree.
Cause we've seen what they are, what the public.
Sure, I completely agree. And, and if I, if I could, Councilman Douglas, I, I would just like to echo, as a refresher for council, we had talked about this previously, but just to build on what Mr. Wells said, if you recall, when we spoke to the county and to the school district, we had conversations already about the TIF process. So that, those initial conversations with the two critical players are already underway. And if you recall, they both were most excited about the institutional piece and indicated they, part of their support is really wrapped up with the idea that they would love to be partners with us on that northwest corner. So it sort of reinforces what Mr. Wells indicated. He really won't be able to do it without, without us all together working on it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Can you just refresh my memory? A total build out, how many actual residential units are we talking?
The, the pro forma contemplates, I believe, six hundred and
Six hundred plus minus.
Forty-two. But I would caution council, that is a, for planning, for financial planning purposes only, the residential unit count will be determined during the zoning phase, which you have final approval over.
Right. I, I am carrying about six hundred, five hundred and sixty or six hundred units, right in that range. Sixty thousand square feet of, seventy-two thousand square feet of retail, twenty thousand square feet of office, and then I've got sixty thousand square feet of use on the education and training segment.
Well, and, and I know that we've been in big discussions with the school district, but I still am concerned if you put one student per address, six hundred and forty-two students added to this school district. Like I said, I know the school district is saying they're in agreement, but I sat here wondering where do we put them? Like I said, that's, that's one per address. So if you put two per address, you're in twelve hundred and some range. I have a lot of concern over that, that I just don't know where we would put these kids. And, and when we talk about growth and smart growth, I understand that you need your money back, I understand this is how TIF works, but we also have a responsibility as this community to have that conversation. Where do these students go? I'm looking at a modular type classroom. Six hundred kids do not fit in the modular type classroom. Can anybody tell me, does, has the district said where they would place six hundred new students?
So in, in our conversations with the district, the feedback we got from them was that they would, again, they would like to receive the fee in lieu, the modular house, any tax, any mill levy override over that initial amount, plus every, for every additional student, they will receive more funding from the state. Little anecdote, when we told them about the number of students, they pulled out the calculator and got somewhat excited about the number of students because it represented a funding increase for them. With that said, not all of the students generated by this project will automatically all be elementary school students. So they will be split, spread out over central, but also the middle school and then probably both high schools. So I don't think that total number is necessarily, or at least they're not looking at it that all of those students are automatically gonna all be central.
No, and I wasn't either. I, I was splitting that up. And, and elementary is where they're cheap to teach. You get into high school, that's where they're expensive students. But at some point, six hundred kids would be coming into this school district. And, and I understand the price per head, but it still doesn't build the schools, it still doesn't provide teachers, it still doesn't provide school buses. I mean, I would just like some of these questions answered, other than figuring a calculator and saying, wow, we're gonna bring this much money into the district. I, as a counselor, am saying, how do we educate these kids and where do we put them? Because it's very important that you have a place to put students or else you cannot educate them. So I would like a little more information of what the school district's plan is, is if in five years, we've put six hundred kids in here and that's, like I said, that's only one per unit. I would assume most of these units will come with two to three students. So I'd like to know, and then, and then the lime green, I guess, is open space?
It's a regional stormwater facility.
Their part, yes, and then these little two tiny ones in there?
Those are just contemplating that there probably needs to be some additional public space, meeting space, gathering space beyond what could be achieved over here. Council may recall, we had some working sessions, do we want to see a centralized open space or maybe spread out? And you, council had indicated a preference for having multiple spots for open space.
Right.
And so these represent really trying to have multiple nodes of public space.
So that is what that is?
Yes, we don't know what form that will take. Maybe it's a plaza, a gathering space for farmers markets, not exactly sure yet. That all is the type of information that we worked out through the zoning process.
Okay. Like I said, I just have, I understand the whole thing, I just have reservations about that and I'm, there's nobody here from the school district, I don't think, to answer those, so. And, and it does bring up the question of the fire department, have they, and I'm assuming they've been in these conversations?
The MDA contemplates keeping the fire district whole, consistent with what we've done with the Victory Crossing project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Amador?
I just did have a couple of more questions. I know that we're in this chicken and egg situation with this of LOI with Regen and Dell West and this whole thing, but what is the projection of the product type to be like a percent of affordable units? And so what I can tell you is that Dell West has some unit types that are affordable, but what is the vision for some of this residential type? And I would say from a percent of product type for affordable?
Yeah, I, I guess. I, my, the answer is I believe it's likely to be a mix of percentages of AMI. I would defer to Dell West to tell you exactly what their, what their plan is. I have not prescribed an affordability level in my discussions with them. So I, I don't, I'm not, I don't think I can answer. I know what, I know what the market looks like, let me, let me just put it that way. The market, market rate in this area runs around sixty percent of AMI. And that's sixty to eighty percent is pretty typical. And so when you're talking about market rate versus affordable, really to some extent, you're talking more about how the project gets financed as opposed to what the market rate is for the project. Now, when you, when you get it financed using low income housing tax credits of whatever sort, then you do have to commit to deed restrictions on the, on the level of affordability. And, you know, I'd say, I would say sixty to eighty percent of AMI is, is really what the market is here and, and anything over that's probably not realistic.
So I know that we have Dell West in the audience and at one point, they were inserted into the conversation. Might they have some comment?
Mr. Amador? I'll call them up as soon as we're done with, with Rick and you can answer, ask your questions.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
On the conversation with the schools, was that with the school superintendent or was it the school board?
It was with the superintendent and then the finance, I'm not sure what the exact title is, but Sandy Rotel, the CFO
Okay.
Of the organization. So we had, we've got an email, we had conversations with both and then we got an email back clarifying their position, so we do have that correspondence.
Okay, I would, would like for you guys to reach out to the school, school district because I've been in a lot of school district meetings and I want to speak for them, but just observing what information comes before them, sometimes it's there on that date, they have their agenda not beforehand, no knowledge of it. So I want to make sure that the school district, the board is aware of what the ask is because I do not want them to say, oh, well, we didn't hear about that. I want, want us to be very clear with the, with the school board, because the school board is the one who makes the final decisions, not superintendent. AMS fourteen runs, with the school district as the lead, not ones taking recommendations from the superintendent. So I just want to make sure that that is understood, that they fully aware of where we're going forward with this. And then when it comes to the unit affordability, units, market rate units, for sale units, so the affordable units are three hundred and seventy-five, is that still right?
Yes.
Okay. And the market rate units are gonna be about a hundred, hundred units? And then for sale units, a hundred and fifty-two, is that correct?
Those are ballpark of what we've been using, yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
And, and again, I have to say that what I will guarantee is that that will change. I, I guarantee that those exact number of units will not be built on this site because it's gonna change based on what the developer is able to finance and what the market will bear and, and lots of different factors.
Okay.
I think it's more important that what we're after is a mix of incomes.
Right.
Affordable up to market and a mix of product type, multifamily versus attached or single family. And then also a, a mix of ownership, for sale and for rent. So truly mixed income, mixed use residential.
Okay. I just want to make sure we, we, that a hundred and fifty-two for sale units does not decrease, but maybe increase. I don't want to see that our, the folks who live here just has opportunity to, to rent or lease, not, not for homeownership. And if there is homeownership, that it's still, you're gonna have at least up in a hundred and fifty units for, for sale because the worst thing that, that I want is for someone to come in and Because the worst thing that I, that I want is for someone to come in and take advantage of our community. And making sure we keep, that's mindful because when it comes to the housing and affordability, where the heating or cooling these places, that it's affordable from day one. And because the highest cost of impact is gonna be heating and cooling those places as well.
I, I absolutely agree. It's important to have ownership, homeowners as a part of this mix. It's just, it's the truth that having ownership in a community provides a different attitude, provides a different level of comfort for people moving into a community. If, if people know that someone's investing their, a significant part of their life savings to live somewhere, it makes the next homeowner more likely to want to live there. And it makes the existing homeowners more likely to keep their property up and keep it in great shape. Not to say that with rental, because you do need rental here because you need that kind of density on the site in order to make the, the project work, in order to make the retail work. It just, it all fits better together if you have a mix of renters and homeowners. Renters, people who are looking to rent, would rather move into a community where there is homeownership because it just makes for a better mix of people, better mix of incomes, better mix. And so I agree. The flip side of that is I cannot guarantee the number of for sale units. It's just, it's too early in the process and it's not something that makes sense at this point for me or you, quite frankly, to want to put into this agreement is those sorts of rigid guidelines. So I would encourage you not to pursue putting in those sorts of rigid guidelines. But as long as the intent is there, I, I am certain that we can work through and get the type of, of mix of income and mix of ownership that you're looking for.
Okay, 'cause I'm just going off here on exhibit C12 and what the performer has laid out and in detail of different phases of when they want to open those up and all, and what's introduced in different phases. And just keep, just keep in mind that we do have a lot of rentals already outside of this project, you know, within the community. So that was, that was my, my goal is to make sure homeownership exists on this property as well.
I, I am absolutely 100% in agreement. I would say you don't have the quality of rental that will be built here in this part of Commerce City. This will be a new product. It will be something that doesn't exist in this part of the market area. So even though it will be rental product, I, I think it will compete very well and will attract a very high quality tenant. And I think we can make sure that it is well managed, well maintained, so that it's a positive contribution to the community. And again, I, I would emphasize it needs to be a mix. In order for this project to be successful, we need to have multiple products being absorbed at the same time. It's a very large site. It's, will be more successful if we have two or three products being sold or absorbed at the same time as, as, instead of just having one. So we're better off having an affordable rental project, for example, going up at the same time as a for sale duplex is going in. And if we can get a senior project going in at the same time, all the more better.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rick. We may have you back up here in a moment. We're gonna go ahead and bring up Mr. Craig Fajette from the Dow West folks. Good evening.
Thanks for having me.
We have a question. Mr. Amador?
Okay.
Thank you. So the question was more geared around product type and percent of affordable units and those kinds of things. And I know that we're projecting or speculating and I, I'm trying to bring my mind around what happened in Valmar and some of the risks and skepticism that came out of that way back in the day when I was part of writing design guidelines to make that happen. And then understanding what happened in the redevelopment of Stapleton and some of the criticism for where are all the affordable units at in that whole redevelopment piece. And so that's where I'm gearing myself from and just so that you understand the question and where I'm going. With, we understand some of the demographic of our community and I don't really want to see us price pointing people out, but I know that just down the street from us, on Colorado and, you know, 40th, there's some very nice affordable using unit types that are out there. So I'm just trying to understand what the vision is and where you're going from a percentage perspective. And I know it's, it's gonna change a little bit, but that's the question.
I'll try to be brief and it's hard for me, but affordable housing is a broad term. In fact, we don't even know what to call it. Workforce housing, affordable housing, moderate, low income, tax credit. Who wants to call it what? Everybody says something wrong about what you call it. And the problem with it is, is that it is such a broad range of different incomes. There's, you know, people that make $15,000 a year live in affordable housing. People that make $43,000 a year live in affordable housing. There are different programs to accommodate that. We feel like a successful neighborhood needs to have a very strong ownership component. And National Association of Home Builders, I think, says the average home bill, average homeowner stays 13 years in their house. Okay? So people that own houses stay longer. They invest in the community. They become part of the community. Renters are more transient, especially in our world. New York City, you may have somebody that rents an apartment for 30 years. It's a different world. Here renters are more transient, regardless of where you are, renters are more transient. So what we'd like to do is build roots and also affordability. In our first project, if we're so lucky to be selected and we're gonna put our best foot forward in the bidding process as we move forward and we understand a lot more about this process and how this urban renewal process works, especially with the Iban 1348, it's complicated things. But we're gonna do a really good job, I hope, in presenting our best effort in our bid for the first four phases in our mind would be about 32 acres. And in our first phase, we'd like to see about 175 affordable, or 175 plus or minus units. I'm not sure what the mix will be, but I anticipate a great amount of them will be 60% AMI, which would convert to if you're a single homeowner there versus every time you add a head to the household, it gives you more money to live on. But about $30,000 to $43,000 would be that income level. But we also will probably have in that, and I'm not sure, some vouchers. We will look to partner with the housing authority and we'll probably have some Section 8 vouchers, which may be 60 to 30% AMIs. So to offset those income levels, we're also gonna build homes that we think should be market three and a quarter-ish. So hopefully we can get relatively affordable for sale product in that low 300s to start, maybe mid 300s. And also build high quality, affordable apartment project at the same time. I'm not sure, right now Stapleton's got a new program that Newtown Builders is doing where they're doing some 1,200 square foot, 185, 190,000 dollar townhome. They're basically getting the land for free. There's a lot of incentives built into that, but they're starting to intersperse some of those into Stapleton right now. I'm not sure we'll be able to hit that price point on a for sale product in our first phase. Our first phase, we contemplate approximately 72 homes, probably duplexes. There could be some townhomes, there may be some smaller urban singles. And also 175 apartments. To address the student population, we do a lot of these things. In fact, I just bought three parcels from Adams School District 50, used to be, now it's called Westminster School District. We bought 15 acres, eight acres, and five acres from that. We're doing one LI-TIC deal, it's an affordable project, it's 145 units. And we're doing 105 single family homes on those sites. And the student generation, the students are, it's an algorithm that all the school districts have, they change subtly, but most of them have an algorithm that says, if you have X amount of apartments, here's how many students get thrown out. The highest generator of students are single family homes. So if you did 100 apartments, you'll get maybe nine, 10 students. And they'll be mostly, I think, younger age students, but there will be some middle school and high school students in that demographic. The single family homes, if you did 900 homes, you might only do 150 kids. So I don't think we're gonna see that kind of student generation out of these particular homes that we're looking to build. Although I will be candid, in affordable housing, you do see a lot of single parents and there are a, a density that might be a little bit higher than market rate apartments. But I will bet that, did you have a number from the school district that they said we would generate if 600 units was up?
I, I do not.
We can get that for you. And I can get it across a couple of different school districts to give you a little bit of density to your, you know, your metrics. But I can get those metrics for you. I don't think you'll be seeing anywhere near, there's no way that we generate a student per house. And I'm doing them all over the city. And what I do want to emphasize though is students will be there, kids will be in our housing. And we're gonna do a better job in every project to create an environment for children to have outside play areas as well as inside play areas. One of the reasons we love this site, we absolutely adore this site for affordable housing. And you'll talk to your own affordable housing authority here, I mean, excuse me, housing authority here is, it is next to a boys' club, boys and girls' club. It is next to, what I understand is gonna be a renovated beautiful rec center. So all the amenities that you can't provide normally in a lower income deal, an affordable deal, I don't even know what they call them, moderate income deals. It's very difficult for us to put, I like to call them workforce housing, I know Renee doesn't like that word. But we're trying to provide homes, we're trying to get people a place to live that is close to where they work, is close to a place where they can shop, is close where they can recreate. And this place is a perfect location for that. So we really like to see it happen in the first phase. So anyway, I think for children, we're gonna do a big effort to have recreational areas, both inside the facility and adjacent to the facility, FYI. As far as density and percentages, as we move forward into Phase Two, I think we'll do a much higher density of single family homes or for sale product. The, the TIF projects survive and thrive on property tax. So the more we can create higher property taxes by increasing the value of the land, the better the TIF gets paid back. When I do a LI-TIC project, some LI-TIC projects, it's complicated, but there's basically two different animals. There's 4% LI-TICs and 9%. 9%, you get 9% equity, get more tax credits. Often they don't use the property tax exemption. But on a 4% tax credit deal, almost to a man, especially in smaller authorities like Commerce City, the tax credit deal only works in our capital stack if we have that property tax exemption. But that immediately puts a hole into the TIF. All this wasn't contemplated three years ago. So staff has done a hell of a job. I mean, I'm getting phone calls from Chris Kramer at 9:30 at night on a Saturday responding to emails from me. Now, I may have had a point in email, but that's pretty good dedication. And he's done a great job of updating us lately because there has been some moving parts that we didn't see coming. Rick and I have been working tirelessly, you know, multiple phone calls. I'm besieging him with phone calls, meetings, and emails. And I think even though we know it has to have an open process, that we've learned a lot in the last two months and that both Rick and staff, if it's us or another developer, are gonna be much better equipped to address an affordable project in this, in this Greyhound Park because most affordable projects today are gonna have a tax exemption and they will conflict the TIF. Anyway, that's a long-winded answer.
Craig, thank you for everything. And I know that we're talking on speculation right here and, you know, vision of where we're going.
Right.
What I will say is, thank you and good luck in the competitive process.
We're gonna do our best. Anybody else have a question?
Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say a better term for the workforce housing is in, income qualifying.
I'll take it.
Over at Rosencorp, it's based on headcount, say 35,000 up to 75,000 per income qualifying places. And I know there's some units over there at Park Hill where you couldn't tell because it's mixed use. But because of HUD and FHA loans, you may have a unit that's 181,000, but the person who qualifies, income qualifying, buys a home for 118 with a certain percentage down. And then when, when they in turn goes to sell it, they could sell it 3% per year market rate, but they can never, unless they, unless they stay in there and pay off the home, they will, won't get the market rate when they sell it. They have to sell it to a person just the way they qualified.
I understand, yeah.
I understand there's, that could be, you know, in this project as well. And then I know you said, uh, housing price around three and a quarter, that sounds kinda high.
I can tell you right now, we're building homes. And I can give you the bids. We live, right now, and Rick all attested it, every day the prices go up to do land development, every single day. It's the highest it's been ever in the state, in the state. And right now, if I can provide a lot at $70,000, I've done a great job. Not a good job, a great job, a single family home lot. And that's, that's my price. And we're getting bids on 1,400, 1,500 square foot homes at $240, $240,000. Right now, I'm gonna break even at $300,000. These are bids that are literally as we speak coming in. And I wouldn't call, I think we're more of a boutique type of builder than we would be considered, you know, like a Oakwood Homes, building thousands of homes. But we, three and a quarter is honestly, in this market, super affordable. It's below average. And if we can provide a new home for less than that, I would try to do it. But I don't know if we can get to that point. But the market will drive it. If we can't sell them, they'll calm down.
That, that's gonna be a challenge because you, the income to qualify with those homes, you have to have a pretty good job for that. Plus what's gonna happen too is you have that type of home on that property, you're gonna see, you know, it depends on square footage, you got square footage likewise, another places near, near Dog Track, it's gonna raise property values, property tax on those homes as well. So we-
I think that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good problem. We face it almost in every neighborhood meeting I go to, I have one side of saying, wait a minute, are you gonna bring my values down? And on the other side of here, are my taxes gonna go up?
Yeah, see, but that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be an issue.
Usually it brings prices up. And I'm not the assessor, but normally it brings prices up. And I do definitely factor in the older homes versus the newer homes. I, I know that you're gonna see property growth, property values go up in that area.
And if this, this happened, you know, they can go back 18 months based on what the sale was and all that. But we should be mindful of that and that might put a challenge to us as property tax here in the city too. If we, we may have to do something where certain areas are grandfathered in, so they don't take that hit.
Grandfather some areas in.
Right.
I think that you're gonna see some velocity in home sales here that you haven't seen in, in the past. And I think that's all probably a good thing at, at the end of the day. And hopefully there's some new programs that'll come around that'll allow people to sell their homes and either move up or move down and take some equity out that they never thought they'd have. I know people that bought houses for $100,000 that now go, I can get $238,000 for that? Oh my gosh, I can move. And as tough as it is, growth is, you know, growth hurts sometimes and that equals more property tax. But at the same time, I think what we're gonna see here is an immediate infusion of optimism for the area. The retailers are gonna love, you know, they love seats in this, they love butts in the seats, you know? I mean, they need new people to make their places do better. And rooftops drive retail, no question about it. And we hope that we can come in day one and- And we hope that we can come in day one and put in a lot of rooftops all at once. And I think that we're able to do that in 2017 if you guys can come to a resolution to approve the current MDA because there are a lot of different factors, and I don't want to go into depth, but for us to get the, for us to get the submissions in in time, for us to be eligible for state and federal tax credit deals in 2017, we would need to start working today. I would need to submit by late fourth quarter at latest, probably November. So it's in our best interest, and I think in the city's best interest, to try to move forward today with the MDA because we are in the eighth inning right now. I'll guarantee it. We are in the eighth inning. I'm not sure how many extra innings we're going to have, but this is not going to go on forever. We have at least maybe 18 months of sustained growth, I can see, especially in our market where we're in the affordable world. But sooner or later, things are going to change. And this particular market cycle is going to end. And I would caution staff, excuse me, council, that if we don't approve the MDA today, that you may miss another significant portion of this cycle. And that would be, I think, a sad thing. So it's up to you. I think Rick has done a good job being flexible enough to accommodate a new use that really put a hole in his pro forma. We've been arm wrestling a lot. He's a big guy, but I think I got him figured out now. But right now, I would caution, I would caution council not to move forward in a post haste. Any other questions?
No, I just got one for, got one for Chris.
Okay, hang on one second. Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. My concern goes along with Councilmember Douglas. You know, when we reached out to the residents over a period of time, there was concerns both ways. We don't want to see housing that's going to depreciate our property tremendously. And then in the same token, housing that would be priced, is what we're talking about, the 300-plus price range, that would cause their property values to increase so high that their taxes would be difficult to pay. It's just a concern because these are, these are residents that have been in that area for a long time. They've been well-established. So, and how do you balance that? Do you try to, I understand, you know, market will drive the value of the home, but then in a similar situation, I don't want to see us crippled with that property either. And so that's just one thing that's just kind of wrote on my mind, and I know that Renee and I get a lot of questions when we frequent the Recreation Center on a regular basis, where we have a lot of the seniors that attend and go to programs there, and they've approached me over the last few months. And even just recently, I had a concerned citizen saying, you know, it'd be nice to see something built there, and it's like, well, we're working on it. Well, I don't want to see, and exactly what I explained to you before. So I just had to voice my concern and just obviously that we would be proactive and not reactive with how we approach that.
I will say, I understand your concern. I hear it often. And if we look at some of the great urban renewal projects that have taken place in the city, you know, you look at Belmar, I mean, none of these projects work without a TIF, by the way. None of them. And you look at overall gentrification, it's been positive in those areas. And yep, growth does have growing pains, but for the most part, it's created a much bigger tax base. It's created a lot more velocity of people moving into the neighborhood and bringing in fresh new ideas, new entrepreneurs. I feel like it's only a positive thing. And I understand that we need to accommodate long-term residents, but, you know, that's an assessor's moment, not mine. And I think an urban renewal authority really has to rely on their assessor to make the right call on those, because I think an urban renewal authority really is doing exactly what, it's didactic, right? We're an urban renewal authority. We're not static. We're renewing growth. We're growing. And I think that's the job of an urban renewal authority.
You know, you hit a lot of the points. I know a lot of questions have been answered. I was just recently, and I know Renee was there as well, at a Rotary meeting where we had a presentation about the migration rate to Colorado. So over 100,000 people migrated to Colorado last year. 17,000 units were built last year. So there, there is a market that's underserved, and we need to take advantage of the opportunity while it presents our, presents itself. Because back in '07, '08, you buy finished lots up to a quarter acre in size for 30,000.
You can't build them for that.
I know. So it's, it's very interesting where the market's at today. We know we have a window that we want to take advantage of, and we'll see what the council does. But thank you for coming in and answering some of the questions. We appreciate that.
I'm available. If anybody needs to call me, I'm always available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I want to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wants to? Oh, Steve, sorry. Go ahead with your question to Chris. I see a lot of fingers go.
Okay, thank you. Chris, on the height requirement, what's the height requirement? How high can they go as far as stories on the dog track? What, what did we talk about? Is it three stories?
Those kinds of bulk standards, such as height and setbacks, are usually, they're always actually accounted for in the zoning. And so right now, the property is zoned commercial, so the setbacks and the height requirements are not applicable to a residential project. So the height requirements will be determined through the zoning process.
Okay.
So yet to be determined, and you have the final say.
Okay. Now, you know, up, up north, those areas that have been established have been metro districts. And with the URA, is this going to be something similar to that, correct? As far as covenants and all that?
As far as, oh, you mean like HOA covenants, controls, and restrictions?
Right.
And from a financing perspective, it won't necessarily utilize special district financing. But from a covenant control restriction perspective, we haven't got too far down that road, but I, I have to imagine, especially through, if there's any kind of affordable project, there will be some additional controls beyond our code enforcement requirements. And I would actually, if, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would also look to Rick to see if he has any additional thoughts on that.
Rick, go ahead.
Sure. Couple of things as far as heights and density. When we did talk with the neighbors, we talked about up to a four-story product. And I do believe that that, from an economic perspective, that that is the height that we're going to want to get to on some of the multifamily product because it does give you the densities that we're looking for that supports the rest of the development. As far as use restrictions, there's really two ideas that go on. One is, as owner of the land and as a participant in the, in the development of the land, you can certainly put use restrictions on, on the property. And we, we have anticipated use restrictions that talk about noxious uses, things that you can't put there that you, you don't want as a part of the project. Probably more important to that to, as far as the overall success of the project, is we're also anticipating putting in design guidelines that talk about how the project gets built, how the project acts, how it feels when you're walking down the street, what sort of heights and densities and setbacks you have from the streets. How do you treat street lawns and sidewalks and all the things in, in open spaces that we've identified, and what do they look like and how do they act? Those are the things that really build, have the built environment support building a community. And that's, I think, more important really than use restrictions per se is, is having those design guidelines in place that really talk about how the area gets developed in support of the community objectives. And that's something we'll be working with the staff on is to develop those, those sorts of design guidelines. And they will be put on the property in a way that, number one, they are restrictive of, of building on the property. And number two, that they're also flexible, because again, things change. And you do want to be flexible as times change. Things are in design guidelines now about electronics and signage and things like this that never existed 10 years ago, so the, the design lines have to change, right? So you want them flexible enough that you can change them and adapt them, but you also want them to be truly a restriction on how the property gets built, so it's supportive of the, of the, of the concept of the community.
Okay. And then to talk about mills, the, the mill increments in the north are like 202 versus, was it 98 in the south here? So what are the, what's the mill cap going to be on the dog track?
And this is, again, since it's an urban renewal authority, we're not asking for additional mills associated, that go on top of the existing property tax. What we're talking about is taking the existing property tax and using it as a part of the financing mechanism. So the property owner, when they get there, the homeowner, the, the owner of an apartment building will pay exactly what the property tax rate is today, which is, I believe, 92 or 98.
I thought it was 97.
97. It's in that range. I mean, you're in the right range. Of that, then, we leave the fire district piece of it intact. And, and our project is asking for 82 mills to come to, to finance the infrastructure. So rather than a metro district where you're actually adding on top of the existing property tax, we're actually just using the existing property tax, but taking it and using it as, as a reinvestment mechanism. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else. I think you can sit down. If you want, you can stay up there too if you want. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this master development agreement? Thelma, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thelma Cole. Thelma Cole, 5841 East 67th Place. And I want to ask questions because I was at some meetings with, where you had for suggestions for the dog track. And one thing, and I know we don't understand everything, one thing was said at every meeting, the people said they did not want housing. And I know you have to have rooftops for one reason or another. But there is no place for anybody to do something in the wintertime entertainment in Commerce City, except the rec center. People suggested an ice skating rink, a roller skating rink on there at Mile High, and also maybe a theater or an arcade. Now, whether any of that's in this idea, I do not know. But that is some suggestions. And when I go back and people ask me, I'm going to say, well, I didn't hear of it, so I don't know.
Well, I will do.
But this is just ideas we have thrown out.
Sure. And I'm going to do my best to answer that question. And I'm going to be backed up by Rick Wells and, and Chris Kramer over here. And even maybe Greg, or Craig, I'm sorry, for shit. Now, one of the things we know is that that King Supers isn't doing, isn't doing great.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Okay? We don't want to see that store go away. We know that they need more customer base. We also know that the Parkway Market Center is not doing very well. There's a lot of vacancies in there. And we can't surely create more commercial development in that area, sit-down restaurants and, and things of the nature that you talked about without having additional customers to serve those type of businesses. So I believe, and, and some of the council may not, but I believe that you have to have that customer base to be able to provide those type of services. Because if you can't show that, that people are going to be in there buying the product or, or utilizing the stores, then the stores aren't going to come. And with, with the existing stores and grocery store in the Parkway Market, with, with the existing customer base, they can't fill those slots because they go bankrupt. You look at the one kitchen that was there, I can't even remember the name of it, JK Cafe. You know, they couldn't stay. Now there's another lady in there. I hope they do well. But we know it revolves around customers, and we know they need to have a customer base. And we know that adding rooftops in that area will help provide the commercial necessities for our community. But without rooftops, I think we're really hamstrung on being able to get commercial-type services. And I would offer to Chris or Rick to speak on that.
Mr. Mayor, the, the commercial zoning that typically is included in mixed-use projects like this, again, you have yet to vote on commercial zoning, so we can't say exactly what's going to be included. But typically, commercial zoning allows for these types of uses that you're referring to. Ultimately, at the end of the day, obviously, the market, is there a market, which gets to what the mayor was speaking to, is there a market to be able to allow a developer to build those? So, you know, I, I would, I would predict, I can't guarantee, I'm not the deciding factor in there, but I would predict a typical commercial development will allow for those types of uses. I just, I just can't guarantee that it will be built because that'll be dependent upon the market.
Thank you.
Well, secondly, I know part of the problem that we're having, we can't, you know, we don't even know if Dell West will be building homes there, if it's going to be somebody else. They have to go through a competitive situation after the MDA is approved to be able to compete for that type of housing. There's also been a, a group that does ice hockey. They take up like 10 acres. They've been looking at Commerce City. We got a pro forma from them a couple of months ago. One of their sites that they like is, is the Dog Track site. But Rick can't even entertain a discussion with them unless we have an MDA. So it's that chicken and the egg that you heard Mr. Amador, Amador talk about. And if we could get a hockey facility that would offer ice skating and things like that, I would love that. We didn't, you know, we haven't had those things. I grew up here too. We haven't had those things. But we're not going to get any of that if we can't get through an MDA and at least get some customer base for a, a place like that to survive within our community. And so if it's up to me, Thelma, we would have everything that this community could desire on that property. But I know we can't have any of it without more rooftops. And that's the best I can do for you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and, and speak on this issue before council takes a stab at approving it or denying it? Seeing no one else. I'm open for a motion from this council. Mr. Bullock.
Move for approval of Resolution 2016-19.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the MDA. Is there a discussion before I move forward? Seeing no discussion, I want to ask the city attorney to read the title.
Resolution 2016-19, Resolution approving phased redevelopment agreement for the former Mile High Greyhound Park.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second, and the title's read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Rick, I hope that the partnership works out and that we can deliver to this community what we intend to deliver to this community.
Thank you very much, and I'm ready to move forward. And our first deadline starts tomorrow, so we'll, we'll get to it. And I'm looking forward to the partnership, looking forward to working with all of you in the community to making this something we can all be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, ordinance is on first reading. We have ordinance 2086. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion to approve the ordinance. Mr. Bullock.
Move the introduction of ordinance 2086 on first reading. Council seated.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I will motion a second with the city attorney reading the title, please.
Ordinance 2086, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, grant funds in the amount of $691,600 for the support of infrastructure improvements for the North Metro Rail Line at Colorado Boulevard and East 72th Avenue, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I will motion a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, eight in favor, one excused. Motion's carried. And we have the Urban Land Conservancy presentation. That's going to be presented by Director Kramer. I'd ask him to come forward when he gets in from the lobby and make his presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Steve Timms is going to pinch-hit for Mr. Kramer and introduce the folks from the URA.
Urban Land Conservancy.
Take his turn would be a good, a good way to relay that. Mr. Timms.
Thank you.
Take a, see if I-
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. So, tonight, we have a presentation, a special presentation, from several of the leaders of Urban Land Conservancy. They've been actually doing extensive work for years in Denver, and they're interested in expanding into Commerce City. And staff's been working with them, having some preliminary discussions, and toured the city over the past several months, and now they're excited to come and present to you all, and to kind of tell you about some of the opportunities that they do. So, with that, I would like to introduce Ms. Bustos, and she has her team with her, and I have a couple of items if they need any presentation materials.
Can I take one moment?
Of course.
I want to make it clear for the record that Mr. Diaz just has left for this evening due to not feeling well, I mentioned that before we started, but I wanted to make it clear for the record that he was not going to be with us the rest of this evening. Go right ahead, Ms. Bustos.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. My name is Deborah Bustos, I am short. I am the vice pres-
What's that?
I am the Vice President of Real Estate for a nonprofit group called Urban Land Conservancy. We've been in existence since two thousand and three, and staffed since two thousand and seven. And we have real estate investments, the majority of which are in Denver, but about twenty-seven investments totaling investment of over sixty-eight million dollars. And much of that is TOD-focused, so a lot of what we are doing is along the transit corridors. And in your packet, you received a couple of documents, one is our strategic plan, the other is a, let's see what exactly it's called, it's called our twenty fifteen snapshot. And that highlights some of the things that we accomplished during twenty fifteen. The one right there, I'll just point out very quickly, on your screen is a charter school that we constructed in Aurora. As I mentioned, many of the projects that we have are in Denver, one is in Lakewood, which is a hundred units of affordable housing, and one is in Aurora, which is this charter school. It serves pregnant and parenting teens and their children, so it's a multi-generational school. And in that snapshot, there are several other projects highlighted, but what it does is it references what we call our five pillars that we operate under. One of them is serving as master developer, one is serving, and that, you have to kind of tilt your head to see that map, but one of them is serving as transit-oriented development. So, as I mentioned, all of our focus is along the transit corridors, serving the low-income populations, I might add. Resource development, we look to get creative in identifying programs and opportunities that help us stimulate some creative resource development. One noted there, the first bullet point, is a social enterprise foundry of a property that we acquired where we house, it's a warehouse, and we house four different nonprofits through that, through that property. And they're really cool, I would love to have lots of time to share that with you, but probably at some future date when we come before you again, we can highlight some of those. The next is land steward. We operate using a land lease model, so we basically land-bank property, and then we partner with development partners who take the project vertical. So, a lot of what we do is land-bank, and then we do the master site development. So, sometimes that's infrastructure development, just a variety of things. But the thing that's special about the land stewardship, especially when it comes to stuff that you would consider, is that anytime there's public investment in our properties, we feel that it's our responsibility to maintain that investment long-term. So, a lot of what we do is operate on a ninety-nine-year land lease, and that's how many of our properties are established. I do want to mention very quickly that it's interesting that both Dell West and Boys and Girls Club were here this evening, because we have partnered with both of them. Boys and Girls Club acquired a, no, they actually leased property from us at Thirty-third and Holly, here they're at Sixty-first and Holly, and in northeast Denver, they're at Thirty-third and Holly. And so, about two and a half years ago, they constructed a beautiful facility on our site. And right next to that, we're under development right now with another group to do a charter elementary school. And then Dell West, I'm surprised you didn't mention that they're having a grand opening on Thursday of a hundred and fifty-six units on two acres that they also brought from Urban Land, bought from Urban Land Conservancy, and they're having their grand opening on Thursday, a hundred and fifty-six units, so.
Is that the place at Forty-First and Colorado Boulevard?
Yes, it is. We acquired nine acres over there, and then we sold them a little over two acres, and we're in a process with the community right now to determine what can be done on the remaining six point seven acres. And then finally, our last pillar is strategic collaborations. We partner with a lot of groups, whether it's charter schools, the school system, to, you may have heard of a group called Mile High Connects, which is a collaboration of foundation, you know, foundation partners, nonprofits, working to provide equity along the transit corridors. So, you know, the focus is along education, hopefully I'll get them all, transportation, housing, education, health, and I always forget one, something else. But a lot of our work, we do very closely collaborations with a lot of groups. I also wanted to apologize to some of the council, because when we first were, earlier this year, or maybe the end of last year, we reached out to several of you to schedule appointments, because a lot of what we do in Denver, we have a very good relationship with many of the, with the city council members in Denver, and so we feel that that's a very critical component of the work that we do. So, we feel strongly that we should reach out and establish those relationships, especially when we're getting ready to do a project in one of your wards, we want you to be the first one to know about it, and we want to get your input on how to make that project be more effective. So, I think that I will stop with that and introduce Mark Marshall, who is our Director of Real Estate, and he'll talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing over the past year, since our board gave us authorization to expand to Commerce City.
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As Deborah mentioned, I'm Mark Marshall, I am the Director of Real Estate at Urban Land Conservancy. We were invited here by the city about a year ago or so to take a look at opportunities for development. We, as Deborah mentioned, concentrate in four areas, affordable housing, schools, healthcare, and space for not-for-profit businesses. We are in the process now of community engagement. We've met with Tim, Chris, development staff, economic development staff as well, Councilman Teeter, Senator Uribey, or, excuse me, Uliberry?
Uliberry.
Another city.
He's from Chicago.
Representative Moreno, and a number of community groups. We're talking to small businesses, we're small business owners of different community groups. We've got a meeting coming up with community enterprises, who's gonna work with us to do some surveying of the community members and seeing what the needs are. Primarily, what we do is engage the community to determine what the needs are. We don't come in and say, "You need office space, you need commercial space, you need retail space." What we do is work with the community and find out what these needs are, and then base our development proposal around those needs. Right now, the city identified five particular areas, our areas of opportunity that we're looking in. The first being around the station, new station at Seventy-second and Colorado, the other area at Seventy-second and the Derby. Short answer for it. The other area we'd initially been talking about, that was mentioned, was the master site development that's going on now in Greyhound Park. I know that was one of the areas of interest, as well as the Super Mercado area, and finally, the Parkway Market. So, those were areas that we've looked at. We've identified some potential spots at this point, and we want to continue our community engagement and see what's uncovered and what our best area of pursuit is in these different development opportunities for us. And, thank you.
Yeah, I would just, finally, in your packet that you received, in the twenty fifteen snapshot, on the backside of that is a map to show you exactly where all of our investments are. And again, on that screen, you have to, if you can rotate it, there you go. You'll, whoops. You really have to rotate it now. But you'll see that a lot of, I mean, almost all of our, with the exception of very few, our investments are along all of the transit corridors, and that's both light rail, commuter rail, as well as high-frequency bus. So, happy to entertain any questions that you might have about either ULC or any of the projects that we have. We've got some really cool projects that I would love to take time to highlight for you at some point now, if you want.
Are there any questions from council? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. All these places you have for, as far as real estate investment, they're all like rental, no, for sale, right?
The, we've got three residential properties, they are all rental, we acquired them for the purpose of preservation, specifically the one way out there on the west, number nineteen, I think it is. I can't see my, it's too small.
Looks like nineteen.
It's the one way out there on the west, on Wadsworth. That's a hundred units that were, they were at risk of going to market, and so we fought strongly to preserve those. From a homeownership's perspective, we would love, we just, as a matter of fact, I think, thank you, we testified last year to the legislature about the construction defects laws, and how the way that they're currently written are really preventing the opportunity to create affordable housing from a homeownership perspective, especially when it comes to condos, because that's where you can create the most affordability. And it's just too restrictive, it's too costly to do that with that current legislation. So, we would love to do homeownership, and we have that as one of our goals, as a matter of fact, this year.
Okay, because we just passed a construction defect here in Commerce City that would love to work with you on something like that.
Would love it.
Anyone else?
What's number thirteen? Oh, sorry. I was gonna ask, what number thirteen, where is that, is that at Long I twenty-five?
Number thirteen, yes. That is on the southwest line, that is a project called Evan Station Lots. It was a one-acre parcel that we acquired, and then we partnered with a group called Medici Communities, and they created fifty units of affordable housing there, and it is a phenomenal property, it's all brick. It is, you know, we are so proud of that property, it's got a rooftop deck, fifty units of affordable housing, and it's got a fitness center, computer area, you know, pool table, all of the nice amenities that you would normally expect to see in a market-rate project. And it's, it's very cool.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, Mr. Teeter.
Thanks for the presentation. Yes, I did meet with Mr. Marshall. I'd be real curious to see what you're, what you find over there on that transit line over there, what the people feel over in that area, what they would like to see over there. I think there's a lot of potential over there for you, there's some good areas over there, and as you know, transit, the younger generation needs someplace for housing to be able to get into Denver and back and stuff, and it'll work, I think it'll work well in that area if you check it out for us. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just say one other thing that I neglected to say is kind of heading, following up on that, is that we're finding that Denver, I mean, as I mentioned, a lot of what we've done is in Denver, and Denver is so, getting so expensive, that many people are getting pushed out, and they're coming to Commerce City, Thornton, North Glen, Lakewood, Aurora. And so, those are our areas of focus, and we selected Commerce City specifically because we think it has a lot of the components that we want to help build up and preserve, because we were talking earlier about gentrification, and while it's a good thing from an economic impact perspective, it's also a challenge for the people who have historically lived in a community. And so, a lot of our work is focused on doing development and balancing it so that we can maintain some of that cultural and historical perspective that kind of makes the community special just the way they are.
Okay, Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, a lot of information. I would like to probably maybe try to meet with you, either both of you, or in the future, near future, because I actually work with quite a few nonprofits that are kind of scattered throughout the city, and they've been looking for a home to house actually five nonprofits that are grouped together. But, so that's one aspect, but another, I get this question all the time, and I live very close proximity of the former Adams City High School site. And so, I just wonder if there's some type of partnership possibly with the school district, because I know that they've wanted to build several things over the last few years, but it's stagnant because of funding, and so I didn't know if that was something that your organization partners with schools, or properties that belong to the school district?
Yes, yes, certainly. We've actually had a meeting with the District Fourteen, and at the time, we didn't get to meet with the executive director, who was out of town, but we'd like to continue that conversation, knowing that that's a potential site for us. And when you mentioned the spaces that the not-for-profits are looking toward, we actually have a shared space group within the ULC that partners different not-for-profits who go through a compatibility test to see who works well together and would fit well together in a space. So, that's something that is along the work that we do already, and would like to continue to do here in Commerce City as well. We found a number of things in conversations here about some of the needs. One of the things we found out around small businesses, for instance, there are a lot of small businesses, restaurants, for instance, for instance, that have the businesses, but their challenge is being able to afford the real estate. They can't come up with the equity or the funds to purchase real estate. So, that's one of the issues we, or areas that we like to focus on, shared space, incubator, business incubator space, commercial kitchens, we've had a number of things, artist workspace. So, a number of ideas have percolated for us, so what we're trying to do is hone in on those things that are most compatible with what the community needs and move towards those.
Thank you. And I'll say one other thing that we've been looking at the school site, the Adams City, the old Adams City High School site, and I also neglected to tell you is that I grew up in Commerce City, and I went to Adams City High School, that's no longer there. And, but we've been looking at the feasibility of that, and I know that there are some issues with the water rights there, but, you know, it's not off the table, but we'd love to see something done there. I would like to see something done there.
Myself included, I went to Adams City as well, so. But I would like your information, I don't know if you could maybe just leave that with the attorney or business card, and we can continue our conversation further on other things, because there's a lot of other things that we've discussed. I know that, on his behalf, since he's absent, Councilmember McElhany had talked about incubator space for startup businesses, and I know that there are quite a few small businesses, myself included, that have looked for spaces to share, but also not necessarily office space, but commercial kitchen is one. I'm in the industry, so I'm familiar with that, but just other things as well. I've met a few people that have businesses out of their home that they'd like to expand outside of their living room, and so one's a floral business, one is, excuse me, silkscreening business, personalizing t-shirts and things like that, and she's got a huge following and a high demand, and we've been in discussion, is maybe we could find someplace to house this, or these businesses until we can find a permanent incubator space. So, that's something that is definitely a need out there, especially in the northern range that I've found, so.
Alrighty, great. Thank you both for coming in, or all three of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Highway Two Widening Project, Maria DeAndrea is up. Good evening.
I'll try to make this a very brief presentation tonight. Basically, just wanted to come before you, there's no action requested or direction. Just to circle back for both the benefit of the City Council and the public, based on the previous discussions that occurred specifically at the council retreat in January about what is the scope of the Highway Two project. And just to confirm some of the previous direction from City Council and what the actual elements are that we're going to include in the project. So with that, just a brief overview of the project goals is, of course, to increase vehicle capacity. We're going from two to four lanes. And with that, improving the level of service, which is how traffic moves along the corridor. Of course, improving safety. Overall, reducing flooding in areas and improving water quality, which I'll get into in a little further slide. And then environmental and contextual sensitivity. What does that mean? Really just being sensitive to the environment that we're working within and knowing that different parts of the corridor are going to receive different treatments. So within the Derby area, we're being more aware of the adjacent properties and how we fit that widening within it, as well, or up in the refuge area that we're, where we have some more room, that we can open that up, move the bike path out, and provide those in a different context in relation to the refuge. And then, of course, the multimodal, which we're providing through the separated bike path. So as we've discussed in the past, our project limits went all the way from Seventy Second Avenue all the way up to I-76, and this graphic shows that. So the red line at the very south end being Seventy Second Avenue and Highway Two. And the original endpoint was the northbound ramps of I-76. And as a result of the discussion with council in January, it was determined that the blue portion here, or essentially the section, oops, excuse me, the section from roughly just south of 112th Avenue up to I-76 would be included in the Second Creek, what we call the Second Creek Infrastructure Project, which will widen 112th from Highway Two all the way to Chambers, as well as widen Potomac all the way up to Highway Two as part of the new rec center project. So that portion was cut off and included in that project. So the section that we're focusing on tonight is the red portion. And that's roughly about 6.6 miles. And then, as I mentioned, the blue portion would be, all the blue pieces would be constructed together. There is an item in the city manager's update today about the utility relocation that's going to be starting on Highway Two, which is really exciting. Excel Energy has started their work to underground the overhead power poles all the way from Seventy Seventh Avenue to Quebec Street. And then the second piece would be from Eightieth Avenue to Ninety Sixth. Those are, most of them are located on the east side of the road. This just shows a picture here in relation to the Dollar General. There will be a few poles left standing that need to serve either to the west or back into various developments. But for the most part, this, all the overhead lines will be undergrounded. And they're coming ahead of us so that before we go and get our own contractor to start the roadwork, all of that undergrounding is completed. We will be, as we've discussed, putting in LED streetlights along the entire corridor as well. That was one of the items that we had debated. Should we only consider them around the intersections, maybe only do a portion of it? But we are moving forward to put in the LED streetlights that would match the ones on Tower Road along the entire corridor. Stormwater and water quality. We've really taken a little bit of a different approach to Highway Two because the right-of-way is so limited and there's, we're bounded on the one side by the BNSF Railroad, that we've had to be a little creative in how we treat stormwater and create opportunities for treating, creating water quality. And one of the things that we're doing is creating what's called rain gardens, or basically low areas, not really ponds, but areas where the water would collect and then filter through the ground. And so those areas can be mowed, they can be all the regular features of roadside ditches, but they basically don't, they pool water for a short time and then outlet to various structures, as opposed to having one or two very large ponds located somewhere along the corridor. We've instead placed these rain gardens at particular locations to treat the water. Of course, we're evaluating all the existing pipes that cross underneath Highway Two, including working with the adjacent developers where appropriate to provide new crossings. We also are making some safety upgrades at the various intersections. Of course, again, we run parallel to the BNSF Railroad. And so we have to make, as we widen out the road, we have to make modifications to the traffic signals and then how those traffic signals interact with the arms that come down to prevent crossings over the railroad tracks. So of course, that takes a lot of coordination with BNSF to make sure that it meets their Another item that we've touched on a little bit in the past, but I wanted to make sure we clarified, was the access modification. So this is primarily in the Derby area. Anywhere north of Derby, every, all access would remain the same. And really, the biggest change is really there at Locust Street. As you can see, we're going from a full movement, so you can basically turn right in as you're, if you're going north, come out and go northbound if you're on Locust Street. Or you can even take a left out onto, and go southbound on Highway Two. We are changing that because we're building a median through here, and that's what this darker line shows. Right now, you can actually come out on Locust and take a left here. It's not a very easy movement, but it is possible. And so what we're, the real change right here is that we're making this, right now, Seventy Second Place is a right-in, right-out, because there is existing median right here. This would be changed to a right-in, and these parking stalls would actually, are going to be transferred. So right now, you actually park this way. So the diagonal of the parking lots, or the parking spaces are changed. And then Locust becomes a right-out, so you can only make this movement out. And these stalls are already set up to accommodate that. And so you can see the changes here at the intersections with the concrete to help define that movement for vehicles. And really, what a lot of these changes at the various intersections are about is channelizing that traffic so that it's a safer movement. All of the streets that intersect with Highway Two in the Derby area are at a very oblique angle. And so you're often looking over your shoulder one way or the other, whether you're on Highway Two or on the side street, to make that movement. And so when we talk about increasing safety, it's really about making those movements, if not limiting them, making them a whole lot easier, such as Magnolia here, where we're bringing that in. You see, we're curving that street in so that you're more than ninety to the oncoming traffic in either direction. Again, you see here, just at Seventy Fifth Place in Oneida, those curves just being more straightened out so that the angle is not as sharp. Newport as well, we're adding a median here. So you'd no longer be able to come southbound on Highway Two and make a left into Newport. But we feel that, you know, you can still make the left at Oneida, and because Newport comes out and it's basically a T there, we're asking people just to move over one block. So we don't think it's too inconvenient and the safety benefits are great enough that we feel that's a good trade-off. In pavement lighting, this was a recommendation that former council member Benson asked us to investigate, and we are going to be using these within the project, specifically in advance of the mid-block pedestrian crossings in the Derby area. This will be the first time that we've used them within the city. As you know, CDOT has used them, E470 has used them. And we've incorporated them into the project to see, first of all, how well they stand up in terms of maintenance and if we see enhanced safety as a result of that. Landscaping, this is also something that was a potential item that we were going to cut back on. But we're, especially again in the Derby area, we're changing the park by bringing Magnolia basically through that little Derby Park area. But then we're going to enhance it by creating one of the heel or healthy eating and active living park areas in those two divided spaces. So we're going to see a lot more trees, some edible plantings, possibly also different types of edible gardens, if you will. And we're still finalizing those plans, but very much green. You can also see trees here along the median, as well as on the outer edge, to kind of give a nice green buffer to the entire area. So with that, those are just the few items I wanted to highlight. We are completing our plans right now. Our plan is to complete, complete the design within the next month or so. We are still working on the BNSF right-of-way acquisition. Really, that's the, kind of the critical timeline, if you will, for going out to bids. We did, just with the consent agenda tonight, hired the construction management firm, which will help us through the project. And our plan right now is to go out for bids in June with a board of, at the July 20th City Council meeting, which would have us starting construction probably in August of this year, and construction by the spring of 2018. We also are incorporating, working closely with South Adams on two new water mains that they want to install in the project. And so we're just finalizing the design for that as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maria, for the update. It's a lot of work in this project and a lot of work on your part and your department and the collaboration that's going on with South Adams and Excel. I'm sure that's a tall order, absolutely, especially in this day and age with construction and schedules and trying to figure out who's on first and second. So good job. I did just hear one little thing about the parks and possibly adding some fruiting trees or something like that. I'll just generally speak that fruiting trees are a maintenance nightmare. So something to be cautious about, that's all. But good job.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Teeter.
Thanks, Maria, for the update. I see that we was, last time we heard, it was going to start in July. Now it's August, which is expectable, what's going on. Have we decided on a starting location yet, where we're going to start at?
That's a good question. So we do include in the plans a proposed phasing plan and, but the contractor doesn't have to follow that. So we allow them the opportunity to prevent or propose their own phasing plan. So at this time, what we proposed is working from the south to the north. And basically, they'd start on the east side, and part of that is driven by the water main installations that are going to be done for South Adams as well. But basically, they do the piece between Quebec and Seventy Second First, east side, west side. Then they'd go to the refuge piece, probably all the way up to either Ninety Sixth or even maybe possibly 104th as a second phase, and then the final piece up to 112th. That's our proposed schedule right now. But we'll have to get the contractor on board before we know for sure where they're going to start.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you, Andrea, or Maria. All right. Next item on the agenda, I wanted to talk about Operation Crockpot, not crack pot, Crockpot. At our Metro Mayor's meeting a couple of weeks ago, as part of the Metro Mayor's initiative is to work on homelessness, and it's a regional issue. So the Colfax Community Network, Metro Mayor's, is working together to donate new crockpots to families and individuals living in motels along East Colfax. They have an ongoing effort to take care of the homeless where the biggest need is. And I know that when we have that, those type of needs, the Metro Mayor's Caucus will be there to support our needs as well. But if we don't start working on homelessness as a region and taking care of some of those needs with everything that's going on in our country, we're going to start falling more and more behind. Mr. Bullock was just with me the other day. We were at the Dollar General on Highway Two and got to see some of the effects of homelessness within our community. Deputy City Manager Troy was there with us as well. So the damages that are being caused, impacts to businesses that are happening, I think it's just a great way to start getting involved and working from a regional perspective. I know Westminster Mayor Herb Ashinson, they have hired a halftime person to work on homelessness issues in Adams County. And what they're finding is that a lot of these homeless folks in our region will move from Commerce City to Westminster to Thornton to Brighton, and they just keep moving around. And part of the problem is they're taking advantage of help in all of those communities and starving others of the resource. So part of the problem is, we want to make sure that they have the resources to get help, food, housing, whatever, whatever, the services that are provided are out there. But we find that they're hitting services in all of the communities and they keep making their rounds. If Commerce City has that gypsy camp and they push them along and say, hey, you know, you can't hang out at the businesses, you can't handhandle, you need to move along your way, they move to another community. And it's not long before they're back into our community. So we have to be vigilant about how we handle homelessness. We have to be caring as well. So one of the efforts that's put forward is this, by Metro Mayor's Coalition, is the Operation Crockpot. And I sent it forward because I was not able to be at the study session last Monday, and I know it came up. Thank you to Councilwoman Carson for handling that meeting for me and making sure that came up. Commerce City has elected to purchase, and from my understanding, has made a purchase of twenty crockpots to be donated to Operation Crockpot, which I think will be a good show on our part, that we're willing to try to take care of the need and the issue. But we have to be able to control it and maintain it to, for it to be effective. You know, I've been to L. Hardin's, I've seen people sleeping in the park and making a mess of things. I watched our Public Works guys go over there and haul off at least four buggies full of stuff. And then they had to pick up the park and, you know, it'd be an entire one-ton full of garbage. And so, you know, we want to keep the community safe, for our residents. We want to make sure that they feel safe when they're going to some of these businesses where some of the homeless may hang out. But it's a, it's a chronic issue and it's going to take a lot more. So with Herb Ashinson, I've asked him to contact Troy Smith in the Administrative Division of the city to talk to him about how we could participate with the efforts that Westminster's trying to take on. At my Adams County Mayor's meeting, of course, Thornton, Bennett, who else was there, Federal Heights, Brighton, they've all agreed to try to work together as municipalities within Adams County to try to keep from shoving these people from one city to the next, to the next. the next, make sure they're getting the help they need, but not abusing the help that others need. So, with that said, I think that the city's doing a great job by partnering with Metro Mayor's Caucus to provide the crock pots. And I want to thank all the council members for stepping up and being a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank you.
You know, there's just a ton of legislation coming down the pike. It's, it's getting more and more as we see the progression of homelessness, where the ACLU stepping in, they want to make sure that, you know, these people have a way to pay off tickets. We don't hold them and put them in jail because they can't pay for tickets. And, and so we're watching the legislation as well. But how we act as a community is, is changing ever dramatically year to year. And I think we need to be vigilant about how we, how we look at that. We have to take care of those residents that say, God, you know, I don't want to go into Derby because there's people that hang out there and sleep there and they're, they're affecting these businesses and they, you know, and I'm scared to go into them. So, the police department is going to have, have to have some efforts of how they handle homelessness within our community because we will start being legislated on how we handle homelessness in the near future, in my prediction. So, I'm not before you recommending that we put in shelters and kitchens, but I am recommending that we be vigilant about how we move forward in the future and attack the homelessness issue. I mentioned earlier, we had a hundred thousand people migrate to the state of Colorado. I don't think that the marijuana laws are helping that migration in, at, at, at all. But they're here and there's seventeen thousand units available. What happens to the other eighty-some thousand people? They have to be somewhere. And, you know, we want to make sure if they're in our community, that they're not being offensive or hurting businesses or that they're affecting our residents on feeling safe. So, it's a challenge that our, our community is going to be dealing with. And I, I want to start by being proactive instead of reactive, and, and the crock pot thing does it. So, I think it, it also shows our collaboration regionally with the rest of the forty-seven mayors in the state of Colorado or in, within the caucus.
Right.
So, again, a, a good thing, and I think we'll reap the benefits from participating. All right. Administrative council business. Yes, sir? Steve, do you have something?
Yes, I have a travel request for National League of Cities University Leadership Summit. I have attended this every summer and its continuing education classes has helped me with being here on council. This subject matters, collaboration with nonprofit, within our community. I, I, I could say I met with about a dozen in the last six months as far as nonprofits wanting to come to Commerce City and, and how do we deal with that? And just want a better understanding, some sort of guideline to help us because that's, it's only going to grow here. And we're going to get a youth coordinator to help facilitate with the nonprofits as well that are outside our city limits, which is going to be very helpful for our community. But this sector here on this subject matter would help me out very much. So, I appreciate council support.
All right. We have a request from Councilman Douglas to be able to go to Madison, Wisconsin to the National League of Cities University Leadership Summit. It looks like a total of about seventeen hundred and sixty-five dollars. I don't think you can beat the round trip airfare of a hundred and eighteen bucks to Madison, Wisconsin. So, I'm asking for a motion, one way or the other, on the request that's before the council this evening. Mr. Bullock? Mr. Amador? I have a motion and a second to approve the travel request of seventeen hundred and sixty-five dollars for the University Leadership Summit for Mr. Douglas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Bring back some good material, make sure you share it with the rest of us and the community.
Thank you. I got one more.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I sent everybody a copy of the different spellings of Hannibal and their signs. If we could get with Public Works and see about changing those signs out so they all spell the same.
So, those are all spellings that we've used on our own street signs?
Right.
That's remarkable. That's something we will absolutely address.
Okay, and that was from a citizen, that wasn't from me, you know? I get a lot of requests for certain things and...
...what part of the country you're from on how you pronounce. So, he might be right.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sure it was not an intentional mistake, and staff can get on that to get that fixed.
Right, yeah, things, you know, things come up.
Sure.
And the other thing, here on Ninety-S sixth and Highway Two, we have the turn signals, whether they're going east and west, north and south. Sometimes we'll have the, where they offset. So, if you're heading west, you're, you're going to get the left turn arrow first and then vice versa if you're heading east. And I guess in the intersection Ninety-S sixth and Highway Two, there's been several incidents where you're turning left, you have to, there's no arrow, I mean, you're free to go, but someone's trying to beat the light. So, if, I guess if those could be, and I, to me, I've looked at them and they're, they're set, and I believe you go at the same time, but if they could be offset where if you're going west, that side goes first and then vice versa. Then on Hundred and Fourth and, and Highway Two, I know there was City Manager update as far as adding extra time at those lights. I still think you only can get maybe three cars going through there because it's not like, it depends on the time of the day, people who are waiting for an arrow. It's almost like a, a race. Everybody's geared to go, they're hitting the gas, they're going. Majority of the time, people are kind of lagging. So, if there's any way we can time it where we can get at least six cars through there, be great. Not they're all going to go at the same time, but it, it just seems like maybe two and a half cars go through that light.
And the motion you're referring to is westbound Hundred and Fourth to southbound Highway Two?
Yes.
Okay.
Because when it's the opposite way, you go east, it seems like that light's a lot longer when you're going, when you're going eastbound and turning north on Highway Two.
It definitely varies based upon the time of day. I travel that way frequently in the morning, during the rush hour, and five, six cars is not unusual. But we can take another look at the timing and when it's adjusting throughout the day.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Yes. We have, in our community, a lot of remarkable students. And I was talking with the City Manager today, and I've talked with Crystal and I've talked with Ms. Carson. And I would like to honor these students on the February, I mean, February, May Second Meeting. Students from the Youth Commission, students from Rotary Interact. We have a young lady that's going to sing the National Anthem at the Little Bridges Rodeo. We have numerous scholarship winners that we will be presenting next week between, huh? Yeah, and the Boys and Girls Club, honorees that were the citywide honorees. And I think we've got to, before the school district gets to graduation, which is, I think it's the seventeenth or sixteenth of, honor these students and bring them before City Council and the city and let the city acknowledge the fact that we have a wealth of knowledge and talent in our city. And so I was hoping that maybe we could notify these different organizations and let them know that we would like them to bring their best and brightest to City Council meeting on the second of January, if we have time available during the first part of the meeting.
January?
I mean, oh, I mean, of May. I know I'm talking about the second, I just can't figure out what month I'm in. Is that possible?
It's absolutely possible. I just want to make sure that we heard the list correctly. Let me read what I heard and somebody else can chime in if you heard one that I didn't hear. The Youth Commission, the Youth Commission members who are graduating, scholarship winners, are you referring to the Quality Community Foundation scholarship winners?
Adams County fourteen, School District Fourteen Foundation scholarship winners, the Rotary Club scholarship winners. I would hope that the foundation...
QCF will be on the twenty-ninth. Don't make that select on the twenty-ninth.
We get somebody that, from, sign up and win that too. But, let's see, also the young lady from singing the National Anthem.
National Anthem.
And...
You also mentioned the Boys and Girls Club.
The Boys and Girls Club.
Honorees from our club.
That they honored, honored three students that were excelled in the city.
And you know, you know, Renee, I think it would be great, the young lady that's going to sing the National Anthem at the Little Bridges Rodeo? She could sing the National Anthem here instead of doing the pledge.
I, yep. I had a hunch somebody would think of that.
Really?
But we have, we have this wealth of talent, and I was thinking it shouldn't be kept under, it shouldn't be kept hidden. So, I'm hoping that this is something we can start and keep going to let the city and us know who and what is happening in the city that makes us proud.
Thank you for that list. We'll see how many of them we can get here on May Second.
I can get you, okay, because all we have to do is talk to three people and probably half that list could be accomplished.
And I'd like to bring up, I think that's a great idea, and at a future council meeting, I'd love to see the youth in government, the, what do you call it? Is that what it's called, youth in government?
Youth Commission? Youth Commission?
Youth Commission. Be able to come in and give their presentation on mental, mental, mental illness.
Oh, that's part of it. That thing we saw at Rotary, they have a whole presentation that they're going to do up at the...
It doesn't take a long time, Brian, but I will tell you what, it will be well worth it for the people at home and in the audience and the council members and staff to see how well this youth in, in government group, what do you...
Youth Commission?
Youth Commission.
No, this is interactive, it is.
That was interactive?
No.
Oh, it's the same kids, though?
Yes, same kids.
Okay, it's the same kids. Well, and, and you will love that presentation. We need to see that here. Is that all, Mr. Bullock?
That is all for me, and I will help you with that because it, our next Rotary meeting, all we have to do is talk to two people, and we can get most of the kids that we're talking about. And between me and Ms. Elliott, we can get the young lady that sings the National Anthem. And between me and Ms. Carson, we can get the rest.
Are you guys conversing over there? Come on now. We're still having a meeting here. All right, Mr. Amador?
Oh, so I'd like to bring up, as basically where Highway Two meets Six and Eighty-Five in front of the gas station by the Mile High Dog Track Park, if you were heading south, on the west side of the road, there's the highway sign that is falling apart or it's basically dilapidated. I'm not sure if someone took the screws out of it or someone hit it, but I drive by it every day, and it's kind of a problem, right? Where you go over the bridge to the overpass to get on to Eighty-Five.
By Larry's Lounge.
In that same location, there was some construction work that happened, probably about two months ago, also on the west side of the road, and the street lamps are out. So, as you go over that bridge, it's very dark. So, maybe if we could take a look at that as well. And then, last but not least, I know that last City Council meeting, we looked at letting retiring Bob Gaylor, and we talked a lot about what was in the city charter that he initially wrote and was a part of. Is it possible to send the city charter to us in some form so that we can review it? I'd be interested to see what it says since it was written forty-two years ago or however long that was.
You should have received a copy of that when you got on council. If not, I'm sure that staff can make sure that you get a copy.
If you refer back to that, that binder that we used with orientation materials in it, a copy of the city charter should be in it. But are you referring to the original city charter drafted by Mr. Gaylor in nineteen seventy or the current version of it with just a few amendments?
The one that we're operating by now.
We can, I know we distributed them originally, but, or are you still in the process of getting more copies printed? We're currently out and we're having more copies printed, but it should have been in your orientation book originally.
I will double check in my stuff.
In the, in the pocket. If not, we will get you a fresh copy.
And then, I would also note that it's available online through the city website if you're curious to look at it on the internet. There's a website, Munich Code has the city code and charter available. It is searchable, so if you want to look at it that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement. I don't know if I should wait until reports or, this is with the Leadership Commerce City Group that myself and Councilmember Bullock are involved in.
Why don't you go ahead now?
And Diaz, okay, that's right. And anyway, Leadership Commerce City is hosting a Community Connection event, which is this Wednesday, April twentieth, from five thirty PM to seven PM, and this will be held at Adam City High School. This is a free event to meet the organizations who provide resources to Commerce City families, where they can find housing help, financial resources, programs for kids, and so much more. So, just wanted to make sure residents were aware of that. We did do a huge marketing piece where we did a lot via social media, word of mouth. We did some flyers throughout the city, but I just wanted to make one last announcement for those that are at home that may be interested or know of someone that may be interested in attending. And again, it's from five thirty to seven PM at Adam City High School. Thank you.
All right. Any other council administrative business? Seeing none, we'll go into reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's City Manager update, just very briefly. We do have an update on the city attorney search, although Mr. Cheesely has stepped in his interim city attorney. City Council did authorize staff to select a search firm to aid you in selecting a permanent city attorney. So, on your behalf, we have selected Strategic Government Resources, which is a national firm that does this kind of work. We are finalizing a contract with them. We'll distribute that to you once we have that, that'll include a scope of work. And we're working to get them scheduled to come before you at a study session to begin their work with you in identifying not only the process, but the key characteristics you'll be looking for in the next city attorney. So, look for more information about that. We also have the monthly capital improvement program update, the legislative report, and as always, the look ahead to the city council work schedule. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheesely?
I just wanted to report, last week, I extended an offer to another attorney to come on board and join us, and she accepted that offer. Rachel Allen, who's been the staff attorney for the Colorado Municipal League for the last ten years, is going to be joining us on May ninth after she finishes up some tasks for the municipal league. We're very excited. The city's going to greatly benefit from her ten years of experience in elections and open records, tax, employment matters. Her list of experience and qualifications goes on, so she's going to be a great...
Thank you.
Great for the city, so.
Great news. Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll go through mine real quick. I know there were a lot of events and we all kind of split up and had to hit different ones. I had the... Um, I had the Adams County Mayor's Lunch, uh, Bob Gaylor's Retirement Dinner, Metro Mayor's Caucus, Rotary, um, the, uh, Adams County Commissioners Youth and Mayor Awards for Commerce City, um, which several of us attended. Uh, Kids First Healthcare Roast of Tom Clark, and I want to say thank you again to, uh, Councilman J.D. Carson for, uh, taking care of the study session in my absence. Rotary again, and then I met with Michael Scanlon. Um, and Michael was here this evening, but I want to congratulate him on being appointed to the South Adams Water Board. Um, apparently, Mr. Murray was term limited, uh, nobody put in, uh, for, uh, the election to run for office of the Board of Directors for South Adams, and, uh, Mr. Scanlon, um, was appointed, uh, to take over that seat. So, there will be a new president, uh, of the water board, we don't know who that'll be yet.
Aaron Phillips.
Is it going to be Aaron Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, um, Mr. Scanlon just reached out to me to ask about, um, how we, uh, maintain our relationship with South Adams, and what are some of the things that have been working and not working, and, and how do we, uh, how do we move forward, uh, with a partnership to, um, continue, uh, a good relationship with South Adams Water? So, congratulations to him. And that's all I have this evening, I'm sure several of you have other things that you've attended, um, if you want to, uh, add that to my report, you're more than welcome to at this time. Telephone Town Hall meeting on Wednesday evening, um, seven o'clock, correct, Brian? Seven o'clock Telephone Town Hall meeting, um, so if you go to the website, uh, c3gov.com, um, you will be able to get the information on how to, uh, dial in to that, um, Telephone Town Hall, and we'll, we'll talk to folks then. If there be no further business to come before the city council, Commerce City, this, uh, Mr. Amador?
Just wanted to report something.
You almost missed it, buddy.
Yeah, I was lit up here. Um, I did attend the Kemp Elementary End-of-the-Year Academic Awards, uh, last week, so that was really neat to see the kids that were there, and I also, uh, created some connections between the school district and a program called Latinos Give, and so spent some time at, uh, Adams City High School. Latinos Give did, uh, provide, uh, a table for them at their annual luncheon, um, and so I was happy that I'm, to make those connections.
Great, thank you. Um, I would like to, uh, to mention that we have an executive session to go into, um...
He's shaking his head.
I know. I'm trying to get Renee over here, thinking that we're going to an executive session. I know it's on your agenda for an executive session, but seeing as how we, uh, approved the MDA, um, we don't need the executive session tonight, so we will not be going into an executive session. So, if there, Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes. Just want to add, reports that, uh, last Wednesday, I attended the United Power Annual Meeting, and, uh, Ron Ash is retiring, and they're, they have a, a new person to take over his position with United Power. Um, me and Renee attended this ACED Executive Showcase Luncheon. Um, yeah, it was really good, uh, presenters there at that meeting, uh, one of the guys, Jeff Hoffman, he's one of the co-founders of Price Line, was there, and, uh, he had some great things to say about that industry. Um, and then just, uh, down the pipeline, how things are changing, that apps will probably be replaced by something else, and, and everything just moving forward, and Colorado's a big hotbed for, uh, uh, that type of industry, so, you know, innovation is a, is a very big topic of that, uh, presentation. So, thanks. And don't forget about the Telephone Town Hall meeting on Wednesday.
All right. We'll try this one more time.
Oh, wait.
Don't touch your buttons. If there be no further business to come before the city of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Now, I'm glad that we can stay here for...